Welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM Tuesday, September 4th, 2012. At this time, I would invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Preston?
Hello, Father. Just thank you for letting us all come here together and just enjoy each other's company and just hope that you'll make your presence known, let us know that since more than two of us are here in the room together, that you'll give us the guidance to make good decisions for this county, that you'll stay with us as some of us are struggling through many difficult decisions, as many difficult times in our lives. I know we have the Crumbly family here in Henry County that's also struggling. We just ask that you just be with us and help comfort us. In Jesus' name I pray to you, Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order, and before I ask for an acceptance of the agenda, there is one item that we need to add, and that's an ordinance of Henry County, Georgia relating to the acceptance and/or approval of any applications or permits relating to the development or construction of any single-family residential dwelling units or lots within planned development zones. This is a handout that you have before you, and Commissioner Preston has asked that we add this as a discussion item, and we will add that as item number G under Planning and Zoning Services. With that change being made, I'd ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Preston. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The first item on the agenda tonight is a proclamation in Honor of Constitution Week. And is there someone here that is going to receive this proclamation? Okay, if you would, ladies, if y'all'd like to come and stand at the podium, I'll read the proclamation and then give you an opportunity, if you would like, to make some comments before we make the presentation. The proclamation is in Honor of Constitution Week, September 17th through the 23rd, whereas September 17th, 2012 marks the 225th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia in 1787, and whereas during Constitution Week, it is fitting and proper to officially recognize this magnificent document and the anniversary of its creation, and whereas we commemorate the legacy passed down from our nation's founders and recognize that our Constitution has stood the test of time, and that because of the wisdom of those who shaped our founding documents and the sacrifices of those who have defended this country, we as Americans enjoy unprecedented freedom and opportunities. And whereas for more than two centuries, the Constitution has presided as the supreme law of the land, keeping our leaders true to America's highest ideals and guaranteeing the fundamental rights that make our country a beacon of hope to all people in search of freedom and justice, and whereas together with the Bill of Rights, our Constitution is the backbone of our government and the basis of our liberties, and while retaining its structure, our founding documents have grown with our nation's conscience, amended over the years to extend America's promise to citizens of every race, gender, and creed. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the week of September 17th through the 23rd shall be known as Constitution Week in Henry County, Georgia, during which time we join with other officials across the nation in recognizing the importance of our Constitution and reaffirming our rights and obligations as citizens of this great nation to protect this founding document, this fourth day of September, 2012, by the Henry County Board of Commissioners. And I believe we have some ladies here from the Daughters of the American Revolution who will be accepting this. Would you like to make some comments?
It's a privilege for us to be here tonight, and thank you so much for this proclamation. The DAR means a lot to us, but the Constitution does as well, and we're bringing a lot of recognition to it as much as we can get the word out that it is Constitution Week. So watch for the sign at the raceway.
If you would join us over here, we'll make the presentation. regarding a call she made to Henry County 911, and that's exhibit number one in your Good evening. You have 15 minutes.
Good evening. I stand before you representing myself, my daughter, as well as my neighbors, friends, and family, and all of Henry County residents. Before I begin my statement, I want to make it very clear that this is in no regards to a complaint against Henry County Police Department. With that being said, on August 20th, my home fell victim to a break-in. I placed a call to 911. I gave requested information to the operator, in which I stated several times that I was not sure if they were still in my home. The operator then advised not to go back in the house, and she would have her unit dispatched out. The first responding officer, which was Officer Gregory, arrived a little over 30 minutes later. On August 21st, Tuesday, I made contact with Don Ash, Director of Emergency Management, Henry County 911 Communication Center, inquiring about why I had a 30-minute wait time, when I specifically stated several times I did not know if the people were still in my home. Mr. Ash stated he saw the call, listened, and he needed to listen and investigate the call and would call me back. The first call I received from Mr. Ash stated that it was operator error, and disciplinary action would be taken, and they were still investigating the call and would call me back when he knew more. The second call I received from Mr. Ash stated that the operator who took my call handed it off to her supervisor, who was already holding five 911 priority calls. Mine made the sixth. Mr. Ash also stated that they were very busy, and all of the units were on the south end of Henry County, and none were on the north end. I'm honestly about as far south as you can almost get. I do know that the operator should have stayed on the line with me until the first patrol car pulled into the driveway. I know that now. The police units can only respond to calls the way 911 dispatches those calls out. If they're not dispatched out as an emergency 911 priority call, that doesn't get, they don't respond as a 911 emergency call. I had to place a call to the non-emergency police number Saturday week ago. I got a six-minute response time. That's from the non-emergency number, not 911 Communication Center. What I would like to see is the supervisor who took and was holding the calls, as well as the operator who proceeded to hand my call off to the supervisor, is to have them permanently removed from their positions, to keep them on staff as a liability for the county, as well as being detrimental to the citizens of Henry County. On Tuesday also, I received a call from Lieutenant Waddell from the Henry County Police Department, stating he had been given my complaint about this response time, and it was told to be investigated on his end. I feel I made myself very clear that my complaint was not about the police department. The responding officers, which was Officer Gregory and Officer Shelley, they were cordial, and I feel that they performed their job to the best that they could, given the situation at my home. That was the first unit. The second part of the statement is, I have great concern that whoever it was that broke into my house gained access from Kayla Court, because you can gain, get access to my property without being seen from the road. I have found that the county, that Kayla Court Road itself is county property, and I'm asking the county to put up a gate to prevent any vehicles from entering that road. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ash, would you like to respond?
Good afternoon, Madam Chairman, Commissioners. Yes, let me just address this call, please. I did speak to Ms. Gilbert in reference to this call, but let me clarify just a couple things for you. When I explained to her that the supervisor was holding the five calls, that would be Lieutenant Waddell. The procedure for the 911 center is, once we take a call, we can't hold a call, so we have to pass it to a field supervisor to handle it, and then it's the field supervisor's responsibility to prioritize those calls. So the call itself was not being held by 911. It had to be provided to the supervisor on duty. At the time, they were holding several calls, including a child molestation, a welfare check with a small child walking down the street, a silent alarm, and several other calls, so I did convey that to her as well. In reference to how the call was handled by the operator, in the 911 center, we have three protocols for burglaries. We have a burglary in a residence where someone is in their residence, and they hear or see someone in their residence. Typically, on those calls, we always hold our call takers on the phone for the amount of time to get the call. The second type of burglary is a burglary in progress, when someone in the neighborhood sees a burglar or someone enter into a residence, and we would generally help keep those callers on the call. This call was processed as a burglar hat, which had occurred. The call taker followed the protocol, asked all the correct questions, and Ms. Gilbert did advise she was not inside the residence. With that, we will go back and look at our protocols to ensure that we are providing our citizens with every piece of information related to that. Another thing I said she mentioned was, at the time these calls were going on, I think it was a little confusion, we were extremely busy on the south end of the county. I'm very aware of where the call occurred. What I mentioned to her was, additionally to all the traffic that we had going on the south end of the county, the north end PD traffic was transferred to the south end operator, so that was going as well. The error that I spoke to her in reference to the call was, once the PD supervisor cleared the call was holding, I felt that our operator probably should have sent the first available unit versus the zone unit, but speaking with Chief Nichols today also, that day they were extremely busy, and two officers were covering four zones. So we've looked at this call. I spoke to Ms. Gilbert. I will, me and my staff will look at the protocol to ensure that we are providing the correct information to ensure the safety of our citizens.
Anyone with a question about this?
I have a question. Please put me through. Not about Mr. Ash.
Okay. Thank you.
There was one other item that I'd like to address, and that is that Henry County is aware of the problems that have been ongoing and yet have made no attempt to prevent traffic from entering the cul-de-sac. That is, that is not the case. We have made attempts. We sent an officer to Fayetteville to contact the owner. We have made attempts, and Ms. Gilbert, I intend to see if we can to close it. I understand exactly the problem, and there are, there are problems like this that exist everywhere, and not just in Henry County, but undeveloped subdivision welcome many lewd activities, which in fact in yours was obviously the route that they took to burglarize your home. But I don't want it to go unnoticed that Henry County made no attempts, because we have. It may not have been in a timely manner to have prevented your burglary, but we are working on it, and we can, will continue to work on it until we get some resolve, and I just wanted to make that clear for the record.
Thank you. All right, moving on in the agenda, Valerie A. Miller of McDonough, Georgia requests an appeal to overturn the approval of a conditional use for a non-commercial kennel for property located at 200 Laney Road in Landlots 205 and 212 of the 7th District. Our presenter is Shay Mathis, County Clerk, exhibit number two. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. On July 12th, Cornelia Breser and Marcus Mommy requested a conditional use to operate a non-commercial kennel on a 2.57 plus or minus acre flag lot located on the north side of the Laney Road, and the property is zone RA. The zoning advisory board approved the conditional use for a non-commercial kennel. On August 9th, the applicant, Ms. Miller, submitted an appeal conceding that the decision was made based on erroneous and incomplete information and without due consideration to the impact on the neighborhood. Ms. Miller is here to present her appeal. Planning and zoning is available, code enforcement, and animal control for any questions that the board may have, and I think the applicant's Cornelia Breser and Marcus Mommy are also available if you, if the board has any questions.
Okay. Mr. Holder?
I'd just like for the record to show that this subject property is on the south side of Laney, not the north side.
And that is District 1, correct?
And that is District 1, not District 2.
Okay, our exhibit book is showing District 2, so Mr. Preston, you can breathe on this.
You can say it, yes.
Good evening. Are you Ms. Miller?
Yes, I am. I'm Dr. Valerie Miller.
Good evening.
It's nice to meet you guys. Chairman, Commissioners, I appreciate this opportunity to appeal the decision of the zoning advisory board on July 12th. The decision was made based on criteria put forth by the zoning and planning committee of the four requirements. The four requirements for a non-commercial kennel, most of which have to do with property setbacks. The third item in particular, the minimum setback from any residential zoning district for outdoor runs needs to be a minimum 50 feet. In the report prepared by Ms. Sherry Hobson Matthews, it states that the property meets all four of these requirements, when in fact it does not. The setback of 50 feet would necessarily have to have the, any of the pens or the kennels in front of the tree area in the back of the property. Currently, or actually I should say shortly after the hearing, I took this photo of the property, which is at the front edge of the tree line in their backyard, and you'll notice that there aren't any kennels in that particular area. This one's a little harder to see because of the resolution, but there is a concreted in dog run area that the original owners of the property, Curtis and Wendy Johnson, had put in for their animals. When you look at these properties and you look at the distance markings, it makes perfectly good sense that Ms. Breser and Mr. Muma would have a surveyor come out and ensure that their pens were in the right area. Well, they did that yesterday, at I'm sure quite some cost, having surveyors come out on a holiday. But magically, one of the pens has moved from wherever it was in the back of the property to now that front area that I showed you at the beginning. When we look at these property lines, we were, my housemate Marion and I were keenly aware of where these property lines were, because a couple of years ago, they asked us to help locate their property pens, because Marion has a metal detector, because they had had a little run-in with one of the neighbors. One of the neighbors had accused one of their dogs of actually biting their dog. Don't know if there's any validity to that, but they asked us to help find their property pens, and so we had. So we knew that these pens weren't anywhere close to being 50 feet off the property line. That's how I know that this particular statement was in error during the official meeting. Secondly, the zoning advisory board did not allow us to present any of the audio or video evidence that I presented you on a DVD. I hope you took some time to take a look at some of that evidence, where you see the dogs running without restraint, you hear the dogs barking. At the beginning of the second clip, you can see dogs running without restraint. You don't see either Mr. Muma or Ms. Breser in the video image at all. I took the liberty of taking a still from the beginning of that video, and over on the left-hand side, you can see circled, there's actually one of their German Shepherds getting ready to enter the woods. Now that woods belongs to Dorothy Eskew, one of the five property owners that were notified of the hearing in July. She was the one who submitted the email with concerns about future possible land development in that particular area. Thirdly, the zoning advisory board was not adequately informed about the perennial disregard Ms. Breser and Mr. Muma have had with regards to county ordinances. They disallowed several of the citations and warnings that they received at their residence in Locust Grove. It should be noted that one of those warnings was a final warning. And shortly after they received this final warning, they moved. They came to 200 Laney Road with five animals, one more than the county allows, without special permit, without the nonconditional kennel. When they came, it was an attempt, on our part at least, to try to get along with the neighbors. We did not call in for several years after they moved in in summer of 2007. We didn't make our first official call on the number of animals or the noise that they were making until 2010. So we did, you know, tried to live and bear with it as the case were. Fourthly, during the hearing in July, it was presented that these dogs are receiving what is called Schutzen training. Now Schutzen is a German word that literally translates into English as protection dog. We were led to believe that they were receiving only tracking and search and rescue type training, but when you take into account this protective instinct, this protective training that these dogs are taking, there's an additional issue we have to consider, not just a barking noise, there's a safety concern that's now present. readily available, we have pictures from the web of Cornelia with one of their dogs undergoing some of this protective training. We have a picture of Marcus undergoing, or I guess their dogs are actually undergoing the protective training. And then we have a third picture, which makes one just a little uneasy. Now, these last two photos come from a website that they host, ArtelKennels.com. After we've located the property pins for them, in an effort, I assume, to help mitigate whatever feelings were going on with the neighbor on the west side, they erected a three-wire fence. This fence, there's a wire here, here, and here, is actually just off their property. When the surveyors came through yesterday, they clearly marked the corner of their property, as well as, I assume it was some sort of tape measure, up the west side of their property to indicate where that fence, if it were going to be, should be. This picture I took this morning, and we could compare the picture from July to this picture, but you can still tell that that particular fencing is not inside their property line, that it would have to be about half the distance it is now from that particular Fifthly, during the hearing, Ms. Breser and Mr. Muma indicated they trained their dogs every day. A previous noncommercial kennel applicant, a Ronald Fox, hearing date was March 8th, 2012, was required to obtain a business license to train dogs in the Schutzen method. The specific condition was stated that the applicant must attain a business license from the Georgia Department of Agriculture Animal Protection Division for the training of animals, as well as the Henry County Occupational Tax Office. No such requirements were made on these particular applicants, showing a certain level of capriciousness in the zoning board. Sixthly, given the nature of the Schutzen training, it is reasonable to refer to these dogs as guard dogs. From the animal control ordinance, a guard dog means any dog which has been trained to attack persons or animals independently or upon command, and any dog which, while not so trained, is reasonably expected to perform as a guardian of the property upon and/or within which it is located. The Schutzen training obviously lends these dogs to be guard dogs. With this being said, our property extends to the other side of the lake. We have a small area that, from about, in front of the tree, from about here, over, and this way, better seen here, this four-by-four post is actually on the corner of our property. You can see their dogs on our property. This was taken in the middle of July. Marcus is on the property. Cornelia is just off. So with that in mind, and with the appeal being out and the exhibit being out, it makes perfectly good sense that they would want to try to fence this area in, to try to keep their dogs out. Well, they did that first by erecting a fence made of hogwire, which is in violation of county code for a front residential area. Then they replaced that hogwire with, I guess what most people would consider garden fencing. That fencing, that's maybe two, two-and-a-half feet tall, rather flimsy. The dogs can jump over it without any problem whatsoever. In fact, all three that they had running yesterday at one time were actually in that area, having a jolly good time. Unfortunately, I didn't get to have that picture. Now, this should give you a better idea of the type of fencing that it is, and their attempts to keep the animals out of the water, because the dogs could easily go around that fence as well as over it, they took one of the posts that the hogwire was originally attached to, leaned it over, and it looks like some sort of trellis work or something was attached to it as some type of blockade. Lastly, when determining whether or not a noncommercial kennel will have an adverse effect on the neighbors, the staff of planning and zoning sent notices only to five residences, when there are clearly six on the platmat that directly abut the property. Additionally, zoning did not take note of the number of neighbors in the immediate area who were opposed to the noncommercial kennel. Of the five people who spoke in favor of the application, all of whom are here, I believe, one is in their employ. She feeds their dogs when they're out of town. A second is a personal friend who doesn't live in the area, as neither did the employee. The other three individuals actually are neighbors. Two live directly behind them, the workmen's, and Mrs. Marshall spoke on behalf of her and her husband. We had eight different residences represented in the opposition. I've labeled this particular diagram with where each of the different petitioners resides. All right, E.B. Smith to the left of Marion and I. There. Marion and I live here. The Marshals live here. The workmen's live there. Dorothy Eskew's property is here. This is the area that she's worried about, future development. The Harrises are here. The Chammels are here. The McClures are here. The Joneses, the Mintners, the Dempsey's. All of these people hear the barking. All of these people know their dogs run without restraint. In fact, one of the neighbors, I don't know whether she's been able to make it yet, she had to pick her kids up at 20 after 6:00, but she relayed a story to us that she had seen a German Shepherd running, and she knew that Cornelia and Marcus were the only ones in the neighborhood at that time with Shepherds, and so she drove up to their property and... And so she drove up to their property to let them know one of their dogs was loose. And Marcus charged the vehicle and basically said, "Don't get out of your car," which would lend one to think that there might be some inherent danger if she had gotten out of the car. Again, this is what I've been told. I wish Terry were here to relay the story. We additionally had letters of opposition from people who had visited us and had heard the barking. We cannot enjoy our yards, we cannot enjoy our lifestyle. Marian and I have probably lived in that area longer than just about anybody. We have lived there since 1995. And it has gone from a very quiet, peaceful area to a very noisy area, mostly because of dogs. Now, reviewing the minutes online, you'll notice that the zoning advisory board, almost without exception, simply takes the advice of the staff. They do not seem to listen to any of the people in opposition to these particular petitions. That, to me, shows that they're not really listening to the constituents, that they're not listening to the neighbors and about any adverse effects that this might have on their lives. This appeal I'm filing is on behalf of the neighbors who did sign the petition. Some of them were traveling and not here. As I mentioned, Terry had to pick her kids up. Jeanette had to do a chemo session this morning, is not feeling well, so she and Bobby McClure aren't here this evening. I have 30 seconds left. I respectfully request that you overturn this decision of the zoning advisory board and provide us the peaceful neighborhood that we once shared. Thank you.
Does any board member have a question for Dr. Miller? Mr. Bowman?
I believe that the lady that, we're down to eight seconds, but I believe the lady that was trapped in her car is right there behind you. I would like to hear from her. I know that we're running out of time.
For questions that the board has, we have plenty of time for that, so.
Oh, okay. No, just.
Yes, ma'am. If you could, if you could state your name and address for the record.
My name is Teri Minter.
Teri Minter.
T-A-R-I.
And the only thing that, I just wanted to know.
What happened?
Yes, ma'am, because it's actually hearsay from the other lady.
Right. It was a few months back, I'm not sure how many months back, I was, I was at home and I saw a German shepherd running down the road, and so I, I wanted to try to help it, and I didn't want it to get hit by a car. So I went over into my neighbor's backyard, the Joneses', and tried to get it to come to me, but it was scared and it didn't want to have anything to do with me. It just kept running, and I was just really worried that it was going to get hit. And I knew that, that the man that lived up the street has German shepherds, and I thought that it might be his. So I got in my car, and I drove up to his house, and I pulled in his driveway, and as I crossed over the lake, the dam, or the, I was crossing by the lake anyway, he stopped me. He just held his hands up like that, and so I stopped there, and then I, I just didn't understand why he told me to stop so far away from him, but I opened the door to get out, and there was a few dogs out. And one of the dogs got in a really scary, kind of crouchy, like, a position like he was going to attack. So I understood that it was a, a trained dog, and he did tell it to stop, and it stopped. You could tell he was well-trained, and it listened to him. But I thought that when he told it to stop, and it stopped, that it would make it okay for me to, to approach him and ask him if he's missing a dog. But when I started to go around the door, he made me, he yelled at me to get out, to get in the car, and not to get out. And then he was telling his dog to do stuff again to keep him in check. And so I rolled my window down, and he never came to me. I rolled my window down, and I just hollered, "Are you missing a dog? There's a German shepherd running down the street." And he said, "No, it's not my dog." And that's all he said. And so I was, I guess, I just figured, well, I've been dismissed, and I backed my car up, and I pulled away. And just as a matter of opinion, I understand that these are clearly trained dogs. They, they clearly understood what he was telling them to do, and they, you know, they're very clearly trained dogs. But it concerned me, it concerned me a great deal that I could have been in so much danger in such a totally innocent situation. There, I was, clearly I was in danger, and it was so, my kids have gone up there. I know about dogs getting out, I know how easy it is for your dogs to escape. Mine is a little Houdini, and I'm constantly having to keep up with them. But to know that if I sent my kids out to look for my dog, if it got out of the backyard, they would be in danger scares me to death. I know without a shadow of a doubt that my dog would get totally murdered by the, if it got in the yard and they attacked him. I can also tell you that the owner of the land that's right behind my house, Ms. Eskew, had given us permission to go out in their yard, in, in that property, and enjoy it as much as we wanted to. Since that time, she's, she's passed away, but we built trails for the kids to run and ride their bikes on, and we regularly walk all through that woods on the trail. I walk my dogs on that trail all the time. And it scares me to know, I did not know this at the time, but it just terrifies me to know that I'm in such close proximity, proximity to dogs that are vicious. It's not a matter of, of ownership or anything like that, because I'm an absolute animal lover, and I, I do everything I can. It's not about the dogs, it is not. It's just simply about safety for me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else have a question for Dr. Miller? Ms. County Attorney, I'm going to look to you for a little guidance, because this is rather unusual. We typically don't have an appeal to reverse a decision made by the zoning advisory board.
I'm sorry, I was referring to the Planning and Zoning Division Director on the process utilized, Madam Chairman. And I did not hear your question. If you could repeat the question for me, please.
This, we typically don't have appeals that are overturning a decision of the zoning advisory board in this manner. So what is the process for the board as we move forward in considering it?
That goes to the conversation I was just having. This, a conditional use decision is a zoning matter that requires public notice and a public hearing. It has to comply with the requirements of the zoning procedures law. I just asked the Planning and Zoning Division Director, Mr. Harris, whether or not this particular appeal hearing was advertised in such a manner, because if the board took a, made a decision to overturn, then you will in fact be making a zoning decision. He just advised that it was not so advertised, which makes it problematic as far as making a final decision that would be effective. I believe that this matter should be advertised 15 days, and advertised as a public hearing, and brought back to the board for a final determination.
Okay. Well, Dr. Miller, I hate to have to put you through this again, but as I said, this is an unusual occurrence for the board. Typically, it's not to overturn a positive decision by the zoning advisory board. In this case, it is. And so because of the advertisement requirement of 15 days, it will have to be advertised for a future meeting, which would be, and of course, we typically have these in the evenings. And so, Madam Clerk, that would be September, or would that push us into the October timeframe to meet the two-week advertisement? October? And what would that date be?
The night meeting would be October 16th.
October 16th would be the earliest night meeting that we would have in order to rehear this.
Is that a Tuesday by chance?
It is. Is that?
No, that's fine.
Is that a suitable day?
Yeah, it's just Mondays and Wednesdays. I'm downtown Atlanta late.
I have a question from, for our code enforcement.
And animal control.
Sir?
And animal control, too.
And animal control. I mean, first of all, if we've got more animals out there than are on the list, then this, we need to have some people put in magistrate court immediately. I mean, there's already been several notices and a final notice given. I don't, I don't think we need to play with this. I think we need to have animal control and code enforcement go out and take a look at this. And I think that at this time, Ms. Yoder needs to step in.
I'm sorry, Ms. Yoder, would you like to come?
I was looking for it, I didn't see her. I'm sorry, Ms. Yoder.
I'll make one comment while you're pressing now, but you can go ahead to the podium. It looks like to me where the citation was written is a different address than where the appeal is coming from.
Absolutely.
I mean, we're at two different addresses. You're in '04, '07, '08, '09, and these, this is new at Laney Road, correct?
Those citations, I believe, that she showed were code enforcement citations for numbers, and those were back, I think, believe those, they may even predate me when Ms. Brazier lived in Locust Grove, and they were for numbers. She has nine, I believe, nine adult dogs on the property, which is under what she's allowed.
Currently, because of the non-commercial kennel.
She actually has 11 dogs on the property, but two or five-month-old puppies, which are, that's allowable. She's allowed up to 10 adult dogs on the property.
And I'm just going to ask you, because I was reading the whole, most of the time, trying to keep up with you, but it was a little more difficult. But on the citations, it said too many dogs. It was, was there?
You need to address that to Arthur Williams. It was a code enforcement, that was not animal control. Animal control doesn't enforce the numbers law, because it's a zoning violation that code enforcement.
Okay. All right. Well, Arthur, can you help me with that one?
Okay. On that one, last one, what it said, found a one, was in Locust Grove. Okay. This other call came in for Laney Road. We didn't have any idea who this was, because she left out of one district, and the officer assigned to that Locust Grove area, he would have known who it was. But we just had it for 200 Laney Road, and it didn't come up on the screen, so we, it was like a new call. That's why they got a warning then. But if we had have knew the same people at the time, they would have been issued a citation to appeal magistrate court. And when we issued the warning on, I know, I think it was on the 25th, and they came in five days later, they were planning a zone, took out the application for the conditional use. That's the only reason the citation was not issued at the time.
All right. Where do we go from here?
Mr. Holden? Mr. Holden? Now, it's his question of the county attorney. You indicated that if a motion was made, or if action was taken to overturn the decision of the zoning advisory board, that this could constitute a lack of notice, or is that correct?
Yes, I think that would be a zoning decision. Any decision I think he made on this, make on this matter would constitute a zoning decision.
Any matter?
Yes.
Any decision?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So the zoning advisory board meeting was properly advertised, but this one wasn't? Is that what I'm hearing?
Um, we don't have to speak to that.
The zoning advisory board meeting was advertised as, as is typically done, and it was heard during a regularly scheduled zoning advisory board meeting back in?
July.
July 13th of this year.
And what's your practice of this appeal times? And I think, what's your practice for when an appeal is filed to the board?
Yeah, right now, the process is we handle it through the?
Advertising.
According to the code of ordinances, all appeals that are filed for any bid zoning matter?
I can't hear.
The code of ordinances requires that all appeals are filed with the county clerk's office, and that staff is only required to be in attendance at the meeting. We've?
So who is responsible for advertising?
If you're only required to be here, who would be responsible for the advertisement?
Honestly, Jim, I think in this case, it was a, while it was a zoning issue, the clerk was taking the lead on some of the items, and I don't think, you know, our communication back and forth, we could have gone through and done the advertising from our end. You know, we certainly could have handled, as is typically the case. We just haven't done a great deal of appeals over, over time. So, you know, we'll certainly confer back with the clerk and work it out on our end and make sure it gets advertised going forward.
Madam Chairman, if you may remember, last year, this exact thing came up to the board for an amendment to the unified land.
I remember that discussion.
Yes. It was not clear then. When I, I was out when this appeal came in, when I got in the office, I just put the appeal on the agenda. And I did confer with PNC.
We need to make sure we close that gap for any future appeals.
Yeah, we'll certainly communicate between us and make sure we do that.
And I'm assuming they have to have a business license to operate? The non-commercial?
No, ma'am.
No business license is required for this?
They're training their own dogs. If they were training, if they were bringing in your dogs for training, then that would entail a business, but these are their own personal dogs.
And they're not selling them?
They may sell puppies, but they're not, they're not taking in dogs for training or taking in dogs for boarding. The training they do is on their own personal dogs, which they wouldn't require a business license for.
All right. Well, I guess that, Mr. Holden?
I certainly hope, and I apologize to both sides in this issue, that you had to come out tonight when no decision could be made. I think that is totally unacceptable. And hopefully, when the proper advertisement is done, that a decision can be made. I can only apologize to both the, both sides. So we'll see you back whenever the advertisement is correct.
And then that date's going to be October?
16th.
October the 16th.
I read several different things. I mean, on April, but Queen Colleen wrote one that only four dogs are allowed, but then when you go and hear, read on the other, on the over, then there's 10 dogs allowed. So I mean, it's kind of a, it, it, it's kind of a mess, really, that needs to be resolved.
Well, they got to zone it, July 12th, right? And they were zoned after that, on July 12th.
That's why, that's why.
So actually, they were in violation in the beginning, but now with the conditional use, they're in compliance.
Gotcha. Okay.
Well, again, we do extend the apologies to both sides that are here this evening, and we'll certainly make sure that we correct that in the future, so we won't have similar situations arise. October the 16th, we will have that advertised and back on. If you have any issues with, with, where you need code enforcement or animal control, please don't hesitate to pick up the phone and call them. And I'm sure they'll, they'll be more than happy to come out very quickly to address that. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a request by Grant Houston to approve a resolution supporting his request to VNX certain property from the city of Stockbridge, exhibit number three. Are you, Mr. Houston?
Houston, yes, ma'am.
Houston, okay.
South Georgia, sorry.
There is a difference.
Yes, ma'am. I wanted VNX property.
We don't get these very often either.
I was told that this is the first time it's been done, done in a long time. I really don't know what else. I mean, do y'all have any questions, or?
Mr. Bowman, I believe this lies in your district. Would you have a question?
When you bought the property, did you know it was a wilderness state of mind?
Yes, sir.
So I, I, this is really has no meaning of, of why, I'm just curious, why did you buy it knowing it was in there? I'm just curious.
Okay. Well, I wanted some recreational property, and that was a perfect piece of property that was very cheap.
Yes, sir.
And close to my house, and I hope that one day my grandchildren and their grandchildren are using it and enjoying it. So it was just a good piece of property to do recreational, you know, riding four-wheelers and just fishing and stuff like that.
So this piece of property, what does it, what does it, does it touch?
I have a, I have the plat here. Do you have a copy of that? I think I sent it over to Ms. Shea. I don't know if?
This was on Calarn property, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I have a copy of the plat, if it'll show up on the...
Okay, with old Hudson Bridge Road, 42. This is that piece of property that backs up to the water that comes into the reservoir, quote-unquote, that Clayton County leases from Henry County, correct?
Correct. Yes, sir. Pates Creek and Little Cotton Indian both run through the property, and it fronts on both Highway 42 and Eagles Landing Parkway.
And specifically, why do you want to de-annex it?
When I went to find a loan for the property, given the nature of the property, I was able to acquire an agricultural loan. And through that process, the loan officer asked me if I would make an attempt to get it out of the city limits, because they don't normally issue agricultural loans for property in the city limits. He kind of found a loophole that he was able to help me out, and I told him I would do my due diligence and make an effort.
I believe you indicated that you would be applying for conservation use on this property.
Yes, sir. I'm, come in January, I will be putting it in conservation with the Henry County Tax Assessor.
What are the current taxes on it, ma'am?
I believe 2012 is assessed about $1,400, $1,500.
And conservation use, I think, probably?
I figured that would be a very good use of the property.
Four, $500 for conservation use. So, you have no intentions of anything on the property?
Uh, it is pretty well unsuitable for anything to be built on it. I don't know if you can see from the plat, but most of the property is in the 100-year floodplain.
Did you own any of the other property that fronts this property?
Uh, no, sir.
I mean, obviously, the property on the left-hand side going down Eagles Landing Parkway is wetland. I mean, it's swamp. I mean, really, the whole piece of property is a swamp. That's all the choices I have.
Any other questions or comments pertaining to this item?
I noted from the deed that the applicant submitted, there are two additional owners of the property, and the law requires the written consent of all the owners.
Yes, ma'am.
And you have given yours under oath. Is there any way we can get the board to provide it?
I have one of the other...
A notarized statement from the other two?
I can procure that. The other owner lives in South Carolina. He wasn't able to make it this evening. But I can get a notarized letter of...
Can we make a contingent upon receipt of that?
Would the motion be made upon the...
Approve the de-annexation contingent upon the receipt of notarized statement from all owners?
Does anybody else have any questions?
Anyone else?
We have a question.
Since this was Farn's piece of property, and Farn did a blanket PD over that whole area, was this part of a bigger piece of the PD?
According to the zoning on a, the city zoning has it under, since it's in the city limits now, the city zoning is in one light industrial. But the county does have it listed in the PG, PD zoning on their maps. But the city takes precedent over that at this time.
Any other questions or comments? If not, Mr. Bowman, this is in your district. I'll look to you for the motion.
Well, I mean, really, the property, there, there may be, quote-unquote, a small piece of it somewhere around the car wash place, that you might could build something on, but at the end of the day, I don't believe it is. And if, if the applicant's willing to say that, you know, now and forever is never going to be built on, that will, that I would make a motion to de-annex it based, based upon receiving the notarized statement from the other parties involved. Right.
Where's all the property?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion on the floor by Mr. Bowman. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
The city of Stockbridge has agreed to de-annex.
They told me to come to you first.
The law requires them to come here first.
If you agreed to let it go, then they would hear it.
Second time in eight years. Moving on to public safety, we have a resolution requesting authorization to renew the Target Solutions Learning Management System. Our presenter is Chief McConnell of the Fire Department, exhibit number four. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board. Thank you for having the Fire Department this evening. You have a resolution before you to renew our contract with Target Solutions, which is our online learning management system that we use to provide training and to record and document all that training to our online and staff firefighters and officers.
City Board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have before you a resolution approving the annual renewal, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holmes and a second by Mr. Preston. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution requesting acceptance of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant. Our presenter is Major Mark Ammerman, exhibit number five. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Tonight, we have this grant in front of you to review for your approval. It is for $25,723. We've been approved to buy bulletproof vests with this grant, and we ask that the board accept it.
City Board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? If not, you have a resolution before you accepting the grant, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is under Planning and Zoning Services. We have a resolution requesting authorization to apply for the 5311 Rural Transportation Transit Operating Assistance Grant for fiscal year 2013. Our presenter is David Williamson, Transit Director, exhibit number seven. Good evening.
Good evening. This is the annual grant with the Georgia Department of Transportation for the Rural Transportation Program, which Henry County's been a part of for the last 22 years. This is part of our funding for providing transportation assistance to the citizens here in Henry County. The grant for 2013 is for $424,337. The local match is our regular budgeted money, and that is a total of $424,338.
City Board member have a question or comment? If not, you have before you a resolution approving for authorization to apply for the grant, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Stamey. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Exegence Group of Amherst, New York, requests a rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to C2 General Commercial for property located at 21 Danner Drive and Land Lot 198 of the 12th District. The property consists of 1.364 plus or minus acres, and the request is for future commercial. Our presenter is Jeremy Gilbert, Planning and Zoning Department, exhibit number eight. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. The request that is before you tonight is a rezoning request for 1.364 plus or minus acres from RA to C2. The applicant is requesting to rezone this parcel to combine with two adjacent parcels totaling 26.03 plus or minus acres that is currently zoned C2 for the development of a medical retail campus. According to the preliminary site plan dated August 26, 2012, and prepared by AEC of Roswell, the applicant proposes to construct a 77,000-square-foot retail, 80,000-square-foot of medical offices, an 8,000-square-foot urgent care facility, and a 68-room hotel. Even though the preliminary site plan illustrates a hotel, the, for future use, the Unified Land Development Code would not permit a hotel as an allowable use in the C2 zoning district. The subject property, according to the preliminary site plan, is to be utilized for parking in a small portion of a building. What is on the overhead now is the overall plan for the entire 26.03 acres, as well as the 1.364 plus or minus acres. What is highlighted in yellow is the 1.364 plus or minus acres that is in tonight's for rezoning. That's the only item. Everything else is currently zoned commercial. The underlying future land use designation for this property is low-density residential, according to the future land use map. The proposed request is inconsistent with the future land use map for this subject property. Although the proposed rezoning is inconsistent under the low-density land use designation on the future land use map, the subject property is also located within the boundaries of the Anvil Block, Fairview Road, Atlanta Road Village Activity Center, and therefore presents an opportunity to fill target land uses for non-residential, land uses. The typical topology for this activity center type is 12% open space, 64% residential, 18% non-residential, and 6% civic. However, the current development trends for this area leave many different percentages. There is currently approximately 51% non-residential and 49% residential, civic and open space, according to the official zoning map. The applicant is not required to master plan this activity center because it doesn't trigger the threshold that's outlined in Chapter Nine. A comprehensive plan amendment is also being proposed, and it'll be the next item on the agenda, where the applicant is proposing to amend the comprehensive plan. In doing that, staff also went beyond the applicant's request, and we'll get into more of that into the next item. Staff did review the request and would recommend that while this rezoning request does not meet the future land use designation for commercial, it is supported by the policies and the objectives of the comprehensive plan, and staff believes it would be appropriate use of the subject property, and it would complement the surrounding area. Should the board amend the comprehensive plan as proposed in Comprehensive Amendment 1202, staff recommends approval with 11 conditions that were previously adopted with the property that's surrounding it to make a coherent set of conditions for all of the property that would be affected by this rezoning. We'll answer any questions that the board may have.
Does any board member have a question for Mr. Gilbert?
This is the final step. We've been working on this project nearly a year. Exegence purchased this property exactly, I think, last September. This is a company that's planning to invest millions of dollars into this county, millions of dollars of revenue, which the county needs, and they're going to create hundreds of jobs, good-paying jobs, for the residents of this county. So, just want to say thank you for all your, your work, Mike, Jeremy, and I look forward to moving this project forward.
Does anyone else have a question for staff? Okay, at this time, I'm going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representative would like to come forth. And if you could, please state your name and address for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brad Riffel with AEC in Roswell, representing Exegence Group.
Is there anything you'd like to add?
No, the staff has done a fantastic job of conveying everything, and I commend them for recognizing the, how this rezoning has prompted a relook at that activity center and what this project can do. Commissioner Holmes is correct. It has a very beneficial to the county, so I'm here to answer any questions.
Does anyone have a question for Mr. Riffel? Mr. Stamey?
These facilities you're talking about building will be medical, correct?
Well, I could point out here, this would be a 25,000-square-foot medical office building, as well as this one. This would be a 30,000-square-foot surgery center. Their, their first initial building that they want to do is this urgent care facility on the corner. This is the hotel that Jeremy had mentioned, that we'll, we'll either go through the process of seeing about having the hotel included in this tract at some future point, or we'll just redraw that to be retail. The rest of the buildings here are all retail centers. Exegence Group wanted to create a, a village-esque type of, of master plan, so you can see why they're have, there's little smaller buildings in, in little groups to create the village-esque type of center.
The reason I asked you that is that you got hours restrictions from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. You aware of that?
I'm sorry?
This, this rezoning comes with hours, hours restriction from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Right, okay.
Are y'all okay with that? You're running the urgent care and a hotel, too?
I'm assuming that we're fine with that. They've, they've had the conditions for a while. We've been through them, and I've had no objections to any of the, of the conditions. And I guess these conditions have been carried over for quite some time over all this property.
Will we be able to amend those conditions for the urgent care and the possible hotel?
The original condition, as they were adopted, as well as this one states, and I believe the condition you're, you're speaking of, Commissioner Stamey, is number nine. It says the applicant will submit a site plan to planning and zoning, which will illustrate the proposed development as pods, which hours, which business hours shall be limited to the hours of 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. This condition may be modified by the Director of Planning and Zoning, contingent upon the determination of the actual tenant within each respective pod. So, it would allow for some flexibility on the planning and zoning director's side if there is an urgent care facility or something that would constitute those, it's something that can be addressed without having to come back before the board. And that was the original condition approved on their other 26 acres.
You can't do that. Your, your powers would be, would allow you to be that broad to take something from a six to 10, or even a 24. Am I wrong, with that?
I don't think that's by default.
It's, it's an existing condition that was approved in 2006 on, on the previous property. And this is just a carryover of those same conditions that were adopted by the Board of Commissioners in 2006 on the 26-acre tract of land.
That's because of deliveries. You know, if you remember, that was a proposed retail site, and that was simply to eliminate deliveries between certain hours, I think, wasn't it?
Deliveries going to be, the majority of the deliveries would be after hours. I was just, that doesn't really come into play as far as business hours. These are operating hours. That's what I would say. I mean, it's much easier to modify it now and see if you get, than having to come back, in my personal opinion. But it's, it's the, the other commissioner's decision. I just thought, I just, I didn't know if you were aware that there's, there's hours restrictions on this.
Yes, we've noted about them. And again, I've been through the conditions with my client, and they, they've made no mention of any objections to any of the, of the conditions. So...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, if not, this is a public hearing, and I'd like to ask at this time if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? If there are no further questions from the board, I will look to Commissioner Holmes as the commissioner of that district, and there is a resolution before you, and I'll look to you for a motion.
I move to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Holder. All in favor? Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is a public hearing. Also, Exegence Group of Amherst, New York, requests an amendment to the comprehensive plan for properties located within the Anvil Block, Fairview Road, Atlanta Road Village Activity Center in Land Lots 196, 197, 198, 218, 219, and 220 of the 12th District. The request is to amend the future land use designation for multiple parcels within an activity center. Again, our presenter is Jeremy Gilbert of Planning and Zoning, and that's exhibit number nine.
Good evening again, Madam Chair and Board Members. This request is a request submitted by the applicant for a comprehensive plan amendment. Their initial request was to amend 1.364 plus or minus acres located at 21 Danner Drive, located within the aforementioned Village Activity Center. In evaluating the applicant's request, staff determined that the entire activity center needed to be evaluated rather than just looking at the applicant's requested 1.364 plus or minus acre parcel. Therefore, staff began evaluating the entire activity center and is recommending multiple amendments to the comprehensive plan, as well as the activity center's designation. In reviewing the current activity center type and topology, staff is of the opinion that the activity center would be best suited as a specialty use activity center, rather than its current designation as a Village Activity Center. Staff's decision... Staff's decision in recommending this change is supported by the future development map, which is a component of the comprehensive plan. The subject area is designated as a community center character area on the future development map. The vision of a community center character area outlined in Section 4.6 of the comprehensive plan states that the area should include a relatively high-density mix of retail, office, services, and employment to serve the regional market area. It should also contain high-density residential within and near the center to reinforce and support it. Community centers' design should be very pedestrian-oriented with a strong walkable connection between the different uses. To provide a little insight into the area, the current proposed activity center consists of 732 plus or minus acres. 373 plus or minus acres is presently zoned for non-residential land uses, which is approximately 51% of that total land area. The current typology mix for this Village Center Activity Center is 18% non-residential and 64% residential land uses respectively. The current development trends are not supported by the current typology mix, which further supports staff's proposed activity center type change. The typology mix for a specialty use center is 65% non-residential and 15% residential land uses respectively. These percentages can vary as their only goals and are not set standards. According to the comprehensive plan, a specialty use center is defined as a center which has its own identity and are focused around unique land uses. Being unique, they each require development approaches and strategies to achieve the best possible build-out. While the majority of the land uses will be non-residential, significant residential development should also be combined in those centers. Adequate pedestrian connections between commercial developments and residential developments should be provided. Versus a Village Center designation, which states that a Village Center is similar in characteristics to a crossroad center but on a larger scale and more intensive land uses. Larger-scale commercial uses and offices are more appropriate for these areas. More intensive residential land uses such as townhouses and small-scale multifamily buildings are appropriate for core areas. While crossroads centers have a commercial focus, Village Centers will have a residential focus. As you can see, this proposed activity center already has predominantly commercial land uses. In looking at what the comprehensive plan identifies that area for would be removing a majority of the existing commercial in the area down to 18%. In doing so, staff looked at amending the boundaries in making this recommendation. As you can see from the Exhibit A that's on the overhead, there are two separate lines. The line to the inside, the blue line here, is the existing boundaries of the current activity center. Staff is requesting to remove approximately 36.28 plus or minus acres from the activity center, which is currently developed as the Fairview Memorial Cemetery. The second change would be to add 64.03 acres to the activity center for a net gain of 37.75 acres, bringing the approximate total of this new activity center to 770 plus or minus acres. Attachment A in your exhibits, as well as what's on the board, illustrates the new boundaries between the two. After reviewing the request for the comprehensive plan, staff is also recommending an amendment to the future land use underlying designation for a majority of the activity center. Attachment B that is in your exhibits, as well as what's on the overhead, shows the existing future land use map for the area and shows the existing boundaries. As you can see, there's already a majority of the area designated for commercial, which exceeds the 18% that is the typical typology mix for this activity center type. Staff in, looking at the new proposed boundaries, also looked at modifying the majority of these land uses to coincide with what the comprehensive plan's goals and, and policies were for this type of activity center, as well as the area, the community center character Attachment C that is on the overhead, as well as in your book, shows the new land use mixes that staff is proposing, with a commercial corridor running down Fairview Road and the majority of the low-density residential converting to a medium to high-density residential to go along with those policies and those guidelines that are set forth in the adopted comprehensive plan. Even with these changes, if the board moves to approve this request tonight, if an applicant comes in to rezone a piece of property that triggers that threshold, this activity center would have to be master planned. Those thresholds are outlined in Chapter 9 of the Unified Land Development Code. The proposed changes to this comp plan would not be unduly detrimental to any property owner in the activity center, but will provide the tools necessary for the area to develop in a sustainable way and a greater sense of place for the Fairview community. This request was heard by the Zoning Advisory Board at the July 12 meeting and did receive a recommendation of approval. One of the recommendations of the Zoning Advisory Board was that this be taken to the public in the form of a town hall meeting, and this request was talked about and discussed at the District 5 Town Hall Meeting on August 25, 2012. So, it has been conveyed to the public as to what exactly is going on, as well as the public hearing at the Zoning Advisory Board, as well as this public hearing tonight. Staff did recommend approval of this comprehensive plan amendment with four amendments, one changing the activity center type from a village to a specialty use, change the boundaries of the activity center as illustrated on Attachment A, change the underlying land use designations as illustrated in Attachment C, as well as change all references within the Henry County City's Joint Comprehensive Plan Community Agenda regarding the Anvil Block Activity Center type, specifically Sections 4.6, Pages 4-47, and Appendix C, Pages C1 and C5. I will answer any questions that the board has on this. I know that there's been a lot that we've talked about, and there may be some, some questions that you have, but I also would like to state, we can look back at just what the applicant's request was, was just to amend that 1.64 acres, and that is something that this board does have the option to just move on that request versus the overall activity center. Staff just didn't think it was fair to evaluate only the 1.64 acres when we're looking at 770-acre area and how it needs to develop. So, I'll answer any questions that the board has.
All right, Direction. I did have one question. Based on the, um, the land use map, um, the Fairview area already had commercial that exceeded 18%, I think it's somewhere around 55%. Can you tell me why, um, it was designated as a village instead of a specialty use initially?
During the time, I, I'm not sure exactly why. The consultant that we had that, that worked on the comprehensive plan, um, going out into the community and holding all of the stakeholder meetings, the purpose of why it was designated for that, I'm not real sure. When the typology is complete opposite of what the, uh, the center is developed to, has already developed as. Not to say that it was an oversight, but to me, the reason why staff is presenting what we are is because we feel like it, it was a slight oversight in what it was, that it, how it was looked at. One thing that we've realized in looking at these activity centers and looking at some of the future land use map stuff is that when the consultant prepared the documents for us, they looked at what was currently built on the ground, not was what was zoned.
Who were the consultants?
The consultants, um, were JJ and G was the consultant firm that the county had.
Maybe Mike or Sherri can answer that question. Why it was designated as a, um, a village instead of a specialty use?
I, I think part of it also had to do with, and Sherri can chime in, on the actual size, the boundary size. I think we were looking at some of the typologies. We were ga, we were gauging the designations based on the size of that particular boundary area. In this case, I think it was about 800, 700, 800 was the boundary area, and we were kind of trying to fit most of those into, as a, as a Village Center. Our bigger, our specialty use centers were far, were quite a bit larger, which is part of the impetus for going ahead and adding some of the acreage on this one and making it a little bit bigger. But, you know, again, every, every one of these, the existing typology, they were used strictly as guides. I mean, we certainly understood that once we got to the point of going through a master planning, that they could, that could certainly adjust up or down, but we wanted to have a, some kind of a starting point.
I think when the consultants looked at the, um, commercial, commercial percentage, and they saw, uh, well over 50% commercial, I think that should have triggered them to look at another designation.
And I think Mike was absolutely correct, but keep in mind, um, the comprehensive land use plan was done in conjunction with our comprehensive transportation plan, and one of the things that we had to determine when we were identifying priority roadway projects in the county is where we envision activity centers within the area. And I think Jeremy hit on it, what the consultants looked at is what was literally on the ground. They did not take into consideration properties that had been zoned commercial for a long period of time, and they certainly did not envision or see that that area would explode as it has done, and certainly didn't take that into consideration. But I think everything that Michael and Jeremy have both said certainly echo the rhyme and reason behind it at that time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Any more questions from Jeremy? Mr. Holder?
Just a comment, and, and it goes back to what was said earlier by Commissioner Holmes about, um, the consultant and the noble, the noble concept that, of this entire plan. And I've, I've had problems with it, and I know Ms. Sherri Matthews has, she's heard my voice many times about it. But think about it, and it goes back to Commissioner, what you just said. In these nodal concepts, they left out the real zoning until later, when the, when the comprehensive land map was adopted. The real zoning is going to come here, all right? And I know we have some people here that, that own property within probably this, this node, or this, this particular node. And I know Mr. Gilbert said, well, this, this particular application will not trigger the entire plan. Next question is, who's going to pay? Who's going to pay for the plan, for the study on the rest of the node? What's its trigger? Somebody's going to have to. Okay, the next thing is, you have multiuses in, within this node. Who's going to get commercial? There's going to be a big difference in commercial value of property and what's going to be residential, what's going to be passive, uh, many things that, that, that take place. In result is, none of that has actually been zoned at this point. It's been laid out. Is that not correct?
That is correct. This does not affect the actual zoning of the property.
Right. So, somebody, I'm just saying, don't be surprised that when this, this happens, as time goes on, somebody's going to end up having to pay for an entire plan for that whole note. Is it going to be shared? I don't know. Who's going to get commercial? I don't know. Who's going to get industrial? Who's going to get what else? Nobody knows. But I wanted to pass that along because I think it's important for people to understand that and know that it's not in stone.
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments? All right, at this time, I'd like to ask the applicant's representative if you would like to come forward again, Mr. Riffel, and if there's anything you'd like to add other than what's been presented.
Uh, there is not, no.
Okay. All right, then, at this time, I will call for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition of the applicant's request? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? If there's no further questions or comments from the board, I'll look to Commissioner Holmes. This lies in your district, and you have before you a resolution on, an amendment to the comprehensive plan for properties located within the Anvil Block, Fairview Road, Atlanta Road Village Activity Center, and I'll look to you for a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Preston, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item is also a public hearing. An ordinance to amend Chapter 2, Zoning Districts, Table 2.03.02, Residential Land Uses in the Base Zoning Districts, Chapter 4, Site Design Standards, Section 4.03.1, Non-Personal Care Homes, and Appendix A, Master List of Acronyms and Definitions. Our presenter is Sherri Hopson Matthews, Planning and Zoning Director, Exhibit Number 10. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. If you all will recall, we've been back before you all on two occasions regarding the personal care home ordinance. In March of this year, the board enacted a moratorium to allow staff an opportunity to review the current ordinance, the language that's currently listed in our ordinance, and to make sure that we were in line with surrounding jurisdictions, and that if we had any terminology or definitions or language that did not make sense, that we brought back something to clear it up. Um, if you all will recall, in May, we brought the item back with several recommendations and amendments to the current language, and as a result of that meeting, um, the board directed staff to host a town hall meeting to see if we could come to some consensus on either keeping the language the way it currently is written, making modifications, or coming to some coming ground. Um, as a result of that meeting, um, staff again met internally in a smaller group in June to actually see if we could again try to come with some recommendations or consensus back to the board in light of a number of comments that we received during not only the public hearing, but also the town hall meeting. Um, I'll ask you all to recall, um, staff did bring it back to you all as a discussion item, and during that meeting, we talked a lot about the Fair Housing Act, and we talked about all of the federal regulations and state licensing, um, regulations that are currently on the books and things that we felt we needed to add to our ordinance so that we could not only be in line with federal regulations and state laws, but also be consistent across the board as it pertains to this particular use. What hit, what we have done and what we've come up with thus far is a recommendation to amend the current language as written in the Code of Ordinances. What staff is recommending is that personal care homes be allowed in any residential zoning district, subject to the standards of that district and any supplemental standards in that zoning district. Personal care homes shall be limited to a four-client personal care home and will be permitted without a conditional use, but each individual must obtain a home occupation license. Our current Code of Ordinances allows for a personal care home up to three persons, and then when it, if the property's zoned RA, it allows for up to four. We also are requesting that we amend how we define a personal care home, and we adopt the definition as prepared by the State of Georgia. We also are including a definition for personal care services, and also, um, something else that was brought to my attention today is that we need to modify the current care home definition because we currently have it as six, and that should be modified to reflect five. So, that's something else that we're looking to modify. Um, we are eliminating all references, um, to a non-home occupation, but, because again, we have not been able to find where that terminology is defined, and don't think that that is just something that should be in the ordinance. And then we're requiring that a state license be required for all personal care homes in accordance with OCGA 31-7-12, which is the state's licensing and regulatory section. Um, in addition, staff is also recommending that we do incorporate setbacks for personal care homes in a residential zoning district, and the recommendation is that a personal care home be set back at least 1,000 feet from any other personal care home of any type in the same or any other zoning district. Um, the place of operation must be a single-family residential home, freestanding structure or a, or within a religious facility. Again, the number of adults that would be permissible would be up to four. Anything beyond four would require a conditional use that's in any residential zoning district, and that's certainly in line with other, um, home occupations that elect to go beyond the home occupation and operate more as a commercial business-type use. And then finally, the hours of operation would be any time over eight hours, requiring 24-hour supervision. Um, I know I've gone through a lot, but I'll try to leave a lot of my time so that I can answer questions, and I'll be more than happy to answer any at this time or after comments have been received.
Does any board member have a question for Ms. Matthews? Mr. Holder?
Sherri, uh, as far as conditional uses for home occupations, is it required for any other business?
Yes, sir, it is. A daycare facility, um, our current code allows a daycare facility with up to six individuals or six children and/or adults as a home occupation. Anything above six would require a conditional use.
Okay, up to six, no conditional use, over six, conditional use.
That is correct.
Is there any others?
No, sir, not, well, well, churches do allow a conditional use, but we don't allow a church as a home occupation, so no, sir, not that I can think of.
So, churches and daycares.
Yes, sir. But there's also a host of other conditional uses that are allowed or But there's also a host of other conditional uses that are allowed, or a host of other conditional uses, but none that are classified under the home occupation.
Okay, that are required?
Yes, sir.
Anybody else with a question from Ms. Matthews?
All right, at this time, I'd like to, this is a public hearing on this matter, and I'd like to ask, at this time, if there is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment to the ordinance. If you could please state your name and address for the record, and you have 15 minutes.
Yes, I'm Jean Bouts. I live at 341 Mountain Brook Court, McDonough. My husband and I are the parents of a forty-year-old developmentally disabled son, and we have had over 10 years of experience in looking for or monitoring a home away from home for our son. We are highly motivated to have appropriate, safe, local choices. We prefer to have our son close by where we would be able to monitor his care. Let's verify where we're starting. Briefly, a personal care home is a home to provide with daily living activities. It is not a nursing home, nor behavioral or mental health facility. In 2009, you gave us a code that allowed a four-client home in all RA zoning districts and a three-client home as a home occupation in any residential area. There are currently 12 small personal care homes on the licensed list for Henry County. If they each serve four clients, that's only a capacity of 48. Compare that to the 2010 population of Henry County of about 203,000. Approximately 15% of those fit in the category of being disabled in one manner or another, which would give us about 30,000 disabled. We certainly do not have an overabundance of homes. Now, as of today, the planning and zoning current recommendations are that the county definition will be in line with the state definition. Four-client homes would be permitted in any residential zoning area as home occupation, and this is requiring the primary operator to be a resident of the property. There is no provision to have any employees of the home who do not live there, and that is a major problem for us. The third provision was that personal care homes shall be at least 1,000 feet apart. Now, it appears that the home occupation situation will work for personal care homes, but with one major but. That is the need for appropriate help to assist the primary operator of the home. This was addressed in developing the ULDC in 2009, when we appeared before the Board of Commissioners on May 15th this year, during the town hall meeting on June 20th, the small group meeting on July 12th, and the Board of Commissioners' discussion on July 7th. Anyone providing 24-hour care seven days a week needs some time off. It was said to us, even parents need to hire a babysitter once in a while. The current ULDC for home occupation states, and let me put this up for you. In Section 7.01.01 generally, and going to Line E, "Home occupations may employ up to two persons who work on the premises but who do not reside in the dwelling located on the premises, satisfying the following criteria. Number one, that they must be located within the RA, Residential Agricultural, zoning district outside of a subdivision. And two, that they must adhere to all of the applicable standards for home occupations set forth in the next four sections." In Section 7.01.02, in the standards for home occupations, A says that they have to have the business license; B says that the employees of the home occupation not meeting the requirements outlined in Section 7.01.01E, which refers to the two, shall be limited to the residents of the dwelling. At least one member residing on the premises must be the primary operator of the business. Okay, Section 7.01.01E1 was added on November 2nd, 2010, at the request of a specific citizen to accommodate the needs of a disabled family member. So precedent has been established by the Board of Commissioners for a reasonable accommodation. We believe this reasonable accommodation precedent should apply to all those who require the services of a personal care home. We propose altering the ULDC for home occupations by adding the red portion, and I guess it all looks red here, or all looks dark, so that we would treat all disabled alike. Under 7.01.01E, "Home occupations may employ up to two persons who work on the premises but who do not reside in the dwelling located on the premises, satisfying the following criteria," to add in number one, the portion which is "operate a personal care home or", and then the rest of that would read as already is. "We believe this addition provides a reasonable accommodation for disabled persons who would populate a personal care home and would be reasonable accommodation under the Fair Housing and American Disabilities Acts. If you cannot see your way to making this reasonable accommodation, I suggest you leave the personal care home zoning code as it is. We believe a fair and reasonable code allows for clients in any residential area without the requirements of licensee, resident owner, homeowner's association regulations or covenants, or conditional use permit." Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition to the amendment? Yes, sir. If you could, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Steve Quarter. I'm the co-owner of Southern Resources Consultants, based in Dunwoody, Georgia, and we operate small community group homes from Rome to Columbus. We have a total of 11 homes. And a question for Ms. Hobson Matthews, she went through the list pretty quick, and I wasn't sure I got everything. What was the suggestion on the owner-operator, as far as their residence?
What staff is recommending is that a personal care home be required under the home occupations requirement. So the previous recommendation to allow or to require that the owner-operator reside on the property has been taken from the actual language, and we're reverting back to the home occupation regulations, which does require that in order to operate a home occupation, that the property owner does reside thereon on the property.
Okay. And of course, I would object to that. My business partner and I operate this business. We do have the home manager of one of our homes with us this evening, who is an employee of ours. He lives there full-time and gives care except when the four individuals are gone either to work or to a date program. But the provision that one of us be required to live on the property, I think is totally unrealistic, and I would ask that that not be required within the zoning ordinance. We're a company, although much smaller, very similar to United Cerebral Palsy of Georgia, where we have 11 homes. They have about 100 homes. And of course, they are owned by the nonprofit corporation. And another big one is Georgia Community and Sports Solution, who has several hundred homes in Georgia. And any such regulation would be virtually impossible for us to comply with. So we'd appreciate your consideration on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition? If you could please state your name and address for the record. Thank you. Good evening.
My name is Cassie Parker, and I also reside in District Five. I'm a landlord and have owned two houses, which have previously had personal care homes. Each time we did it before, we leased the property to the personal care home, the state came out and looked at the property, demanded what needed to be fixed or adjusted in order for the home to operate in that building, and also, they had inspections throughout that. So I am also against the owner-occupied requirement.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in opposition? Okay. At this time, I'm going to ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the If you would, please step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Good evening.
My name is Sandy Murphy. I live at 15 Plantation Drive, Stockbridge. Madam Chair and Commissioners, based on the information that was in a recent edition of the Henry Herald, it appears that the decision may have already been made in regard to personal care homes and subdivisions. While we may not like your decision, there are other issues. We wish to remind you of the reports of abuses in PCHs in metro Atlanta in the last couple of months, one right here in Henry County. Without strict guidelines, many of the people seeking care may also become a victim of an industry that is growing too rapidly and does not have checks and balances in place to ensure a safe environment. Permitting PCHs in residential subdivisions changes the dynamics and introduces an element of appreciation and uneasiness in a neighborhood environment. The situation in our subdivision is of great concern to us should a license to operate a PCH be issued to Jeffrey Boyd. We are compelled to bring to the attention of this governing body that the relation between Jeffrey and Linda Boyd is blatantly unstable. As a matter of public record, on or about August 10th, 2011, Linda Boyd was arrested for spousal abuse. Jeffrey Boyd then filed for a protective order against her and filed for divorce annulment on August 10th, 2011 because of her drinking. The divorce annulment was final on September 20th, 2011. Despite the spousal abuse and divorce, Mr. Boyd then allowed Ms. Boyd to move back into the house. In January of 2012, Mr. Boyd applied for a license in his name for the PCH. Nowhere was it mentioned that Mrs. Boyd would be living there and provide the care needed for the elderly residents they planned to take in. This was not an outright lie, but certainly could be perceived as a lie by omission. If I understand correctly, first, the owner-operator caregiver must live in the home to provide these services. Secondly, no one can live in the home besides the patients if they are not related by blood or marriage. Since Mr. Boyd is no longer married to Mrs. Boyd, she is no longer related by marriage and so cannot live in the home. And yet, she states in an email that she sent to all of the neighbors that she is going to be the sole caregiver. On August 10th, 2012, the police were again, this was 2012, not 11, the police were again called out for domestic disturbance, and Mrs. Boyd was arrested for criminal trespass and obstruction of an officer. Mr. Boyd stated that over the past several months, the stress level increased, and the last couple of days, her drinking had spiked, and he could not control her behavior. She was bonded over for this offense, and at this time, the case has been turned over to the District Attorney's Office, and no hearing has yet been set for this offense. It should be pointed out that this is a felony arrest and should not be taken lightly. At this time, Ms. Boyd continues to live in the home. We must ask you, are these the kind of people that should be taking care of our elderly or mentally challenged residents? Who will protect the residents who they are because they can't take care of themselves? State has a limited number of inspectors to inspect these homes. Can we expect them to keep a watchful vigilance on this particular home? Let me reiterate that this battle is not just for cottonfield subdivision, but in any income-level subdivision in the county. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the amendment to the ordinance? All right, if staff would come back forward at this time? Are there any questions for Ms. Matthews? If not, you have a resolution before you, and we'll entertain a motion.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion, but before I do, I'd like to make a comment. I'm not against personal care homes in any way, shape, or form. However, I do believe that recorded covenants on deeds should take precedence, and if, in fact, someone wants to break the covenants, it should be up to that person to take it to court and not have to let the county do it. So therefore, we'll make this motion, that we approve it with one amendment. That amendment is, the county would not grant a license to any business in a subdivision that has recorded covenants that clearly state, no businesses allowed within that subdivision.
All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bowman. Is there a second? All right, I'm going to call one more time, that we have a motion on the floor to approve with the amended language that he offered. Is there a second? All right, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there an alternate motion on the floor? I'll call one more time for an alternate motion. Okay, seeing none, because the first motion failed, there's no alternate motion on the floor, then the current ordinance stands as written, and there is a no action on this item. Okay. All right.
Do we need to address the moratorium? Is it lifted at this point, or?
It expires. Moratorium expires.
Today, I believe. Was it not continuing until today?
Mm-hmm.
Chair, one more comment. Tell me again, the conditional use, somebody would require a conditional use in a RA or residential subdivision?
The current code requires, it's two options that's currently in the current Unified Land Development Code. If you're zoned residential outside of RA, you would be allowed up to three individuals as a personal care home. You would obtain a home occupation license, and then any licenses that's required through the state. If you're zoned RA, you are allowed up to four individuals. Same process, you'd still have to obtain a business license from the business license office, but it's classified as a non-home occupation, and there would be no conditional use. Anyone wanting to operate a personal care home over four would be classified as a care home, and you would be required to obtain a conditional use, but it would only be allowed within the RA zoning district.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Moving on to the next item on the agenda, we have a request for approval of a development agreement with Jefferson Homes Incorporated for the Annabook subdivision located at 224-320 and 2609 Meadowbrook Drive and Land Lot 79 and 82 of the 6th District. Our presenters are Sherri Matthews, Planning and Zoning Director, and Terry Mickel, Public Works Division Director, and that's Exhibit Number 11.
Good evening, Madam Chair. I will just kind of give some background, and then I'll let Terry jump in where necessary. If you all will recall, there was a rezoning request that was actually approved by the Board of Commissioners to rezone a tract of land that's located at 224-320 and 2609 Meadowbrook Drive. As part of the actual rezoning request, there were certain conditions that were placed on the property at the time that it was under a different ownership and under a different developer. The property has since been acquired, or is in the process of being acquired, and individuals are looking to finalize the subdivision. As a result of that, there were several conditions that the applicant sought to have modified. More particularly, there was a strong focus on the infrastructure and roadway improvements, and the turning back over or submitting the road.
and the turning back over or submitting the road back to the county, because originally, when the request was approved, it was approved for private streets. One of the zoning conditions that was required at the time that the modification came back to the board last November is that a development agreement be entered into between the county and, at that time, Community and Southern Bank. I think it is now under Jefferson Homes Incorporated, and the subdivision in question is Annabook subdivision. I'll defer to Terry for the additional transportation and infrastructure recommendations.
We had a list of several things that are incorporated into this agreement that we asked to be repaired or undone. Probably need to explain some of these and where we're currently at on them. The first of them was a guardrail issue out there, and we have reached an agreement that in here that the owner or developer will correct those, and we have an exhibit that explains how that's to be corrected, basically, it just be corrected to GDOT standards. So that one's pretty simple at the time. The next one is replacing any missing manhole lids. That's pretty generic. I think everybody understands that one. The next one, remove rust from exposed piles and repaint according to GDOT specs and use a GDOT qualified contractor. We're in agreement with that one. Of course, remove garbage is pretty simple. The next one is something that was originally, we wrote up that there was some graffiti up underneath the bridge that, in my opinion, was something I don't think we would want in our community, some of the things that were painted on it. We asked that that be cleaned up or text coated over that. They've modified that a little bit to request that twenty percent of the community or the property lots would be built, with the understanding, I think, that they're concerned that if they go out there today and address that graffiti with nobody living there, highly likely that it might appear in a short period of time back. So they're asking that it would be occupied getting people there, in and out of the area might reduce the likelihood of that. The only comment I would have to that, they're still willing to do it, there would be a short period of time with it there with residents moving in. So I see the need of having some people out there. That might be a deterrent from anybody doing that. It is up underneath the bridge. I think anything on the top side, we ought immediately do, but underneath the bridge, that would be a possible consideration to that. The next item is clean out debris. The bridge, they have identified all the areas there. We're in agreement with that. There is an emergency access on the back of the property that was called for in the original plans. They've agreed to do that. The last item that probably needs the most explanation is the one concerning the utilities. In the original agreement, we asked, we understood originally that it was going to be private roads. By being private roads, that meant the utilities come in, they would have got their easements from the property owner ahead of us getting right of way. What that simply means is they're first entitled, or they have prior rights. Normally, what we would like to happen is we get the right of way, then utilities come in, they're subordinate to us. Y'all are quite familiar with what happens when a utility is ahead of us, and we have to pay them to move. Like, the power companies typically, if they have prior rights before us, anything occurs in the right of way, and we have to move, we have to pay. They're sort of the lead in it. We subordinate to them. So we ask that all those easements be undone. We come in and have the right of way and then those easements put back in place. In other words, everybody would subordinate to us. The applicant or the developer here made, I think, a very great effort in trying to do that. However, there was some complications with that. He was successful with Atlanta Gaslight. Their utility hadn't gone in yet, so they were happy to deed their easements back over to the bank, I believe. I believe they did deed theirs back to the bank. So he's successful with Atlanta Gaslight. Georgia Power, however, already has their utilities in, and they were not willing to give up that easement. They did, however, advise us that they would be willing to repair or replace anything that they did if they came inside the right of way and done repairs or anything like that. They would place such right of way in a condition substantially the same as that which existed immediately prior to their work. They do that anyway, so they wrote us a nice letter that said they're going to do what they normally do. But they refused to do it, so I really don't... To put that in perspective, here's what it means for me for the power company. The power company has their easement in place. We'll get the right of way, so they'll have a prior right. If there's any cause for that utility to be relocated or moved, we will have to pay, I assure you, we'll have to pay for that utility to be moved. If they come in and do work, I'm sure they'll replace everything just like they found it as they said in that letter. The chances of a power company having to be moved inside of a subdivision, I would think would be extremely rare. I have not experienced having to move a power line inside of a subdivision yet. It's our main roads and thoroughfares that, when we do widening or expansions, that we get in these prior rights issues. The only case that I can see where we may get in a position that we might have to pay a utility is in some pipe replacement or something like that, if we have to relocate them, or we add a drainage structure or something like that. There may be some condition like that, and I would put that in the rare category. The last utility that deserves note is the Henry County Water and Sew Authority. Again, they had their easements in place. They as well wrote us a letter. They basically said that they would and have no objection to the public sanitary sewer easement being incorporated as part of the right of way for this development. Similar to the sanitary sewer line, and any and all maintenance or damage to other facilities caused by the sanitary sewer line remains the responsibility of Henry County Water and Sew Authority. Basically, the same thing. They're willing for us to come in and get the right of way in conjunction with their easement, but as far as doing away with their easement and then reassuming it after we get the right of way, giving us, I'm going to call it first rights, they would rather not go to the board and do away with an easement, and I understand why. If they have an existing facility out there and they abandon that easement, they really abandoned that utility. There may be some legal way to do that, but I'm sure it would require a lot of work from their attorney, our attorney. The Water and Sew Authority, as y'all know, is the authority. We work very well with them. Currently, in these type situations, as it is now, even if they're in our right of way, you know, we end up working with them and on any relocations, paying part of it anyway. So I guess, to kind of summarize, what we have here is not, I think, a total... Well, we end up in a total problem with the utilities, but I think there's some things that need to be aware of. If we go ahead and accept this as it is today, we do, we could incur some costs from the power company, and really, with the Water Authority, you know, we're about in the same condition we are with any other subdivision. I would hope in the future, though, we are able to kind of get this problem straightened out, where, you know, we get all the right of way first, and then all these easements come afterwards, so we don't have to subordinate to anybody. But I think the applicant, again, tried his extreme best to do that. I talked to the Water Authority, had conversations with Georgia Power and myself as well, and it is what it is. I'd be happy to answer any questions on that.
Does any board member have a question? Is the applicant present?
Yes.
If you would, if you'd like to step up to the microphone. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Neil Kobel. And concerning the easements that Mr. McMichael just spoke about, I'd like to point out that those easements that, as we researched it further, are easements that would be found not every time in a subdivision, but in most subdivisions. Part of the problem is created by the fact that we have to go through in the development process, whether it's a private road subdivision or a public road subdivision, it's required to get approval by the Water Authority, and it's also part of y'all's approval process to make sure that all the utilities are installed, and then the right of ways are final to final grade and grassing. The Water Authority requires all the utilities installed before you can set all of the water meter boxes and other services to be inspected. The county requires the sign off from the Water Authority before they allow us to record a final plat. In order to get the utility companies to come onto the property, we have to sign blanket easements. The Georgia Power and gas easements are not specifically described to a certain area. There would be a proposed right of way or a proposed private easement. They're just blanket easements that not only grant them access to put it in, onto the property before it's recorded as a final plat, but it also allows them to access the property to provide services to the homes in the future. So it's a matter of, in the future, to be corrected, the right of ways would need to be accepted with the final plat, and then the utilities installed after they become public to correct that issue. It's the only thing I'd like to point out.
Does anyone have a question?
I have a question.
Thank you. Mr. Stani?
Neil, let me ask you a question, please. Has this development been recorded yet?
Has it been, a final plat recorded? No, sir.
Okay. Terry, what about the other issues we had? There was two issues that I had with it earlier concerning the emergency access interest that we had off Meadowbrook. Where are we at with that? Do we gain access to that emergency access on the backside of the subdivision?
That requirement is in this agreement, that they agree to do that access. It's not been built yet, but it is a requirement of this development agreement.
I think it's in there, isn't it?
The access is there. The road, we had to get approval from the fire authority, the fire department, the marshal to get, we had to give him a detail of the fencing and all, and he approved that during the, while we were working on the development agreement. And so we'll be putting that in. It's actually under construction now, it's just not completed, but it is part of the requirement for a final plat, and it's specified in the development agreement, has to be done prior to the final plat.
Last but not least, the $25,000 contribution to Foster Road. Where are we at with that?
I think that's addressed in here, in that I think it's on a lot-by-lot basis.
It's addressed under item B, and it states that the parties acknowledge that because $5,924.17 has already been received from a previous developer of the property on October fifteenth, two thousand and nine, of the original $25,000 contribution, $19,075 remains outstanding. The outstanding amount shall be paid to the county no later than fifteen days prior to the submission of approval of any final plat.
The final plat was submitted today, correct?
It was submitted sometime...
Today?
Yeah, I guess it was. It seems Friday, but yes, ma'am. It did hit today.
Latonya, have you reviewed all this?
I have. I've been working with Mr. Kobel's attorneys for the past few weeks, and we've gone over this, and with staff, with Terry and with Sherry Matthews. So it is in substantial form in accordance with your earlier concerns at the earlier zoning meeting. There's one addition I'd like to add to paragraph... Terry has my notes.
Paragraph three, the title of its covenant, running with land, and I'll read the first sentence in her addition. Upon full execution of this agreement, the terms and conditions of this agreement shall be, become permanently binding upon the property and shall run with the title of the property subject to the provisions of paragraph seven. That's the part we'd like to add, subject to the provisions of paragraph seven, and paragraph seven is future changes in development standards.
Right. The property will be grandfather for a period of fifteen years under the current ULDC design standards in place today. If development is not completed within fifteen years, then the property will be bound by whatever development standards are in effect at that time. So we always want to put a timeframe to get everything done and have all the development standards set for a certain time. So I don't think that would be objectionable. I just thought about that, y'all, so I don't think that might be a problem.
Any further questions from the board? If not, Mr. Stani, this lies in your district. You have before you a development agreement, and I'll look to you for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the development agreement with the verbiage added to the modified version.
All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve, seconded by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. The next item on the agenda, this was added as an amendment to the agenda and ordinance of Henry County, Georgia, relating to the acceptance and/or approval of any applications or permits relating to the development or construction of any single-family residential dwelling unit or lots within planned development zoning districts located within unincorporated Henry County, which were platted prior to the adoption of the ULDC September fifteenth, two thousand and nine, enacting a moratorium for a period not to exceed thirty days. I believe Mr. Preston has asked that we add this to the agenda, and I'm assuming you're the presenter, Michael.
Yes, I am.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, good evening, board members. Back in two thousand and nine, the current ULDC that we currently have in place was adopted. At that time, the PD, we had a PD zoning designation prior to the adoption of the new ULDC. And upon adoption of the ULDC, the PD zoning designation went away, and it was subsequently replaced with a mixed-use designation, MU designation. Included within the ULDC were provisions, base-level provisions to address, I guess, base-level standards for all residential zoning districts from RA to R5, as well as, we did, we also included provisions to address the design standards, minimum design standards for mixed-use developments as well. Inadvertently, we did not include a provision to address the design standards for the PD development, as there are still several PD developments existing within Henry County. What I'd like to put up here now is, that's a current excerpt from the ULDC, which highlights section 4.0107, which speaks to design standards in single-family residential dwellings. As you'll note, it speaks to RA through the R5 zoning districts, and it speaks on issues such as building materials, roof pitch, finished floor elevations, things of that nature. Typically, what will happen in most PDs and in most rezoning cases or for subdivisions, there'll be an associated set of conditions. But if not, if zoning conditions were not imposed, then we would at least have some kind of design controls and design standards in place for all of our residential properties. With the exclusion of the PDs being carried over into the ULDC, we did not have that provision in place. So when it was brought to staff's attention, we felt it was prudent to move forward to recommend a text amendment, which is what we've done in the past and several other occasions, to correct this issue, to come up with some criteria to address specifically PD developments. As stated, while we don't have PD developments on the books anymore, we do still have several PD developments that are either undeveloped or partially developed at this time. So this would, and that's what we'd be doing, is creating a base-level standard of design criterias for residential properties within these PD developments to be consistent with every other residential zoning property that we have here within the county. Again, a staff recommendation that we move forward with a moratorium... that we move forward with a moratorium just so we can help expedite the process. It was our intent to bring this back at the next zoning meeting on September 17, I believe is the next date, to make sure we got it done as quickly as possible. But, you know, certainly if that's, you know, if that's the board's desire to move forward with the moratorium, if not, we certainly would like, seeking direction on, allow us to move forward with the text amendment to address this oversight.
Mr. Preston?
First, Michael, I appreciate you bringing this forward. And, you know, where this all kind of generated from was we had an intergovernmental planning session a few weeks ago. And these are some unique times in Henry County, as well as the country, where, you know, there's some unique things going on with we lost banks and other things. And we've changed the ULDC. I apologize, you know, the thing is, I've been out of the country for pretty much the last week. And I did ask you and directed you to start working on this. And I think I take complete blame on the moratorium because I believe I got a number of emails today from quite a few people who are in the construction industry. And I just want to make sure it's clear that no way and no shape, form, or other way were we looking, or at least me specifically, was looking to impair the construction industry. I mean, we want all jobs, as many jobs as we can get in Henry County. All we were looking, or all that I had asked Michael to look at, and I know when we heard the dreaded word "moratorium", a lot of people got nervous. And all I asked Michael to address was that I knew we had a concern that we had planned developments that were kind of out there on their own. And we have homeowners that their biggest investment is their home, who have already seen substantial drops in their value. And, you know, and I'm worried for the tax digest's standpoint. You know, we've already had a 15% reduction in the tax digest in the last year. That if we didn't clear up some of these loose ends, some of the building standards for some of our neighborhoods in the community could be left where pretty much things could be changed. The building standards could be changed. Another thing, because we didn't have something set by the county. And that's all I was looking to do, was just protect our taxpayers, protect our citizens, try to protect the tax digest in those aspects. So I would like to say that I'm not looking to proceed or move forward with a moratorium. But I would like to provide Michael with the directive that, you know, I want you to work towards finding a correction to the problem. And you said that it shouldn't take too long to work on that text.
We don't think so. We think it'd be a relatively simple text amendment to put some provisions in place to address those undeveloped properties within a PD development.
So I apologize for getting everybody stirred up. And if you came out for the moratorium, that was never our goal. It was, you know, it was something more or less to address a concern we have with standards in protecting our existing citizens.
Basically, if we get a no motion, no action on this item, it will go away. And then the staff will come back and present some recommendations on the September 17 meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
And I think, Mr. Preston, that you're referencing a particular PD that there were no conditions put on as far as construction is concerned. But I think since I've been on the board, I think we've been pretty stringent on building material and construction materials and housing sizes and everything else. So there's a rare few that we have out there that have absolutely no conditions on there. So that's a good thing.
Yeah. And I, just giving you guys full credit, you know, this is, I came from the school board first. I can remember when you and Randy first came on the county commission, we had shown, I had shown you some analytical data on cost of educating and other infrastructure items. And full credit, I mean, after we had some of those discussions, I know y'all had other things going on. The standards did become more stringent. And y'all worked hard. And I know that's in conjunction with everybody else who was on the board. And I just want to make sure we address the loose ends here.
So is there a motion on this item at all, from anybody?
Really, I just wanted to provide the record.
First of all, I do have a certain problem with the fact that it says Henry County has found that the interest of the public necessitate the enactment of a moratorium. I think we need to look at something, ladies and gentlemen. This, there are some areas that government needs to keep their nose out of, and there are some that it does not. But let me tell you, let me tell you on this one right here, and Brian, this bothers me tremendously. We're talking about PD subdivisions that we're talking about helping to control the building or architectural standards. What about a start of subdivision? What about any of the other subdivisions along the way? From the lowest to the highest? Should they not be given the same consideration? Or are we just going to go out and pick certain PDs and say, "We don't want our property values to go down"? That is wrong, ladies and gentlemen. If we're going to do it, every subdivision from the lowest to the highest need to be considered. And I think the one that you're talking about that no conditions were put on was Eagle Brook. Is that correct?
I mean, I know it is one of the planned developments that is included, but this is-
Okay, the planned developments. We are still focusing on planned developments. We're not looking at all subdivisions. I'm going to give you a brief history lesson on Eagle Brook. And Brian, you and I have had a little run-in many years ago when you were on the school board. And there was, you were assigned, Toda, in one of these meetings, correct?
I have come to a meeting as a citizen in the past.
I believe that's right. But it was due to the subdivision that was across Bill Gardner Parkway from Eagle Brook. Eagle Brook came back, by Calhoun's, when that was in District One. Eagle Brook and that whole, I said, excuse me, 155 Carter prior to 2002 were in District One. And if you go back, the record will show those were, those were, conditions were put on it. Okay, what was, what was the fault of the conditions or the lack thereof for Eagle Brook? And what can this board, what can a governmental board enforce that's not part of the zoning conditions of the zone?
Warren, just going off memory, what I recall and then is that we actually left feeling like things were much better because the government, the county, did make provisions that tried to provide the proper masonry siding, the proper landscaping, just to stay in conjunction with the area that we were out, that was out there. And that's, that's the way I remember it going down. Now, you can tell me what's different.
You're talking about the one across the street, not even Eagle Brook, correct?
No, I mean, I was one of the, I mean, I don't, I don't refer, I don't know what you're referring to.
I'm speaking of when Calhoun came to this board to get a-
Oh, no, I wasn't here for that, no. I've never stood in opposition to-
That's my point, exactly, Brian. All that was done prior to you even being around.
Right.
And, but what was wrong with it, is what I'm saying.
Well, and just addressing, just because there's more, there's more items at play than just the government trying to be involved. Because part of this, I agree completely with you. The government needs to be very careful about getting involved. And I've been one of the people that has expressed that opinion. But when we have the government, meaning the federal government, have a FDIC that is now mandating that all the lots that were taken over by banks and other things must be dumped onto the marketplace within five years of the time they took over. That's a law-share agreement. We're now on the back half of that law-share agreement with most of the banks. And this impacts all of, this impacts the entire county. And if we don't, and I completely agree, that's why I think developers had the best interest because if something's not going well, they have the right to sit on their property and wait for their investment to come back. And that's what most citizens are doing. We've lost value and we're waiting for, we have the hope that if we're patient and we as leaders make the right economic decisions, businesses will come and property values will increase and we'll recoup some of our value. However, if we have an artificial thing created by the federal government where the banks, really, and I can't even get too mad at the banks, but the banks are required, if they want the federal government to reimburse them for a portion of the losses, they have to unload the lots. When that does that, that now puts the citizens in a situation that is not a fair arms-length market-to-market transaction. And when that happens, if we don't step in to try to figure out how we create an unintended consequence of the federal government, I think the market's already been really jeopardized.
Okay, do you not think, though, that part of that should be the responsibility of that, quote, homeowners association?
Well, the problem, and that's where I get back to the FDIC. The FDIC, a lot of these neighborhoods, the PVC farms,
They will be-
They go back to the control of the bank. The bank controls now the homeowners' board. So you could have neighborhoods that are almost over halfway complete-
Understood.
-that now the banks, through the declarant action, can lower the standards, not for the best interest of the community, not for the best interest of the tax digest, not for the best interest of development and economic activity in the future, so they can unload to get their reimbursement from the federal government, leaving, the only people that are going to make a good thing of that situation are the bank unloading it and getting the reimbursement from the federal government and the person who's getting the dirt-cheap land that they can then lower the standards and hurt the county. And we lock in our values forever at those lower standards. Because you know how when you do, when you go and you appraise property, do they care what type of molding you have in the house? Do they care that you have tile in the house? No, they're going to go by square footage and then, and pretty much, and who's in your neighborhood? And that's, and that's all I'm trying to address is that we need to look out. I don't want the government meddling as much. I'm a businessman. I've, you know, in the private sector, we, we don't want the government meddling. But we have, the federal government has created a situation that is just horrendous for local municipalities throughout the country. And this isn't going to be the last time you hear about this.
Well, speaking to various people in the building business, and I've had my share of them within the last two or three days when we found out there was going to be a moratorium, which was news to me. They said, "We're actually building a product today because of building materials being lower, concrete, trim, flooring, the whole bit being cheaper, that we're actually building a decent product for a little bit less than what it was four, five years ago." Again, is it not, is it the government's part or government's role to step in? I question it. It'll be interesting to see. I don't want to take up any more time.
But I do want to, because I completely agree. If you can build, and I think it's probably possible, labor costs are cheaper, construction costs are cheaper. But the problem is, once again, why then do we have to go into the neighborhood and through the force of the banks, changing, because they have more votes because of what happened, having the right to change the standards lower? They're not talking, I agree with you. The costs could be cheaper. You could lower the price point if you stay within current builder guidelines. But that's not what's happening. The guidelines are coming down.
Are we still saying we're going to stick, do it strictly with the PDs? Nobody else has been said.
Well, I think we've had some, we've had some discussion about this with some subdivisions that are under construction, with the builders wanting to come in and change the condition. And I think the board is a, and the ones that have said, "No, if there's a house that's already built."
We've had amended conditions during this down economy.
Only for subdivisions where no homes have been changed.
Exactly. And there were very, we've had very few. In fact, it surprised me that we haven't had any more than we've had for requests for amendments. Brian, it, but, I mean, if there's a subdivision, it's not a PD that could still have some homes in it. Is this strictly for PDs?
This, the text amendment we're proposing would be simply because the current ordinance, the current ULDC already addresses these provisions for RA, R1, R2, R3, R4, R5, and MU. It was just PD that was left off because, again, it was eliminated from the ULDC. So right now, to your point, if there was an R2 subdivision out there that did not have any conditions dictating design standards, roof pitch, things of that nature, then they would be bound by the provisions you see up on the screen.
Can you recall an R2 subdivision with no, no design standards?
No, sir, I can, not my time.
It's not there.
Right.
But it is there on PDs.
That's correct.
Mr. Bowman, you have a comment?
I've got several comments. And having just built two houses, I can tell you that the building material prices have, they might have decreased a little bit, but they hadn't decreased a whole lot. Concrete hadn't went down a whole lot, neither has asphalt. Obviously, asphalt's an oil-based material, so it's not going to go down that much. The, I've got a question I'm going to ask you, but I wanted to make a comment about several things. One is just recently, Mr. Jones, Tim Jones, just sold a house in Crystal Lakes for $497,000, almost unheard of, because it'll be the first house sold for over $400,000, I think, in a couple of years in Henry County. But I would also state, as I do not currently hold an appraisal license. I turned my license in because I got real upset with the state government. Our state legislators put us in this box that we're in because they, first of all, you could not use a distressed sale. You could not use a foreclosure. You could not use a short sale in any. It was against the law to do it. And if we'd done it, we would be penalized and we'd lose our license, number one. Number two, in their haste to try and make them look good, and it's the state legislature, ladies and gentlemen, that pushed all of this on you and us by not taking in consideration on an appraisal report, the cost to reproduce. I had a house burned down the other day on one of my rental houses. The insurance company said, "Well, I cannot reproduce it for the $103,000 that you've got insurance on." I'm not going to tell you what I paid for it, but it was substantially less than the hundred and, actually, $110,000. But what I'm telling you is the construction costs are still there. And an appraiser does take into consideration conditions in a house. take into consideration conditions in a house, and if there's, if, if you've got upgrades in a house, and I've got several real estate agents in here that I'm sure will, I don't know about appraisers today, but we used to take those into consideration, because there's a lot more to it. But you can thank the state legislator, our state representatives, and our state senators for the mess the local county's in, by rushing to what they were doing and trying to look good to the taxpayer, saying, "Oh, we're going to make them use foreclosures, we're going to make them use these sales." And shortly after that, I couldn't, I couldn't appraisal house, because there's no way you can, there's no wa, I mean, you know what it costs to build it. You know what it costs. I mean, houses are sold in Henry County, a lot of people know this, and a lot of, hey, I've lost over $200,000 on my house right now if I sell it. I'm not in a hurry to sell it. So I'm really not, you know, I'm not going to lose that much when it's all said and done. But at the end of the day, there's a, the question I have for you, and I apologize for going on that rant, but I felt like you, I felt like you guys should know that the state put us in the box for you. But I felt like, the question is, is in these PDs, has anybody already bought property that could come back to the county and file suit against us in the form that we may have, we have may performed a taking, because we're changing something after they purchased the property? Now, I don't know if, I'll have to ask either Mr. Holder, or Mr. Stamey, or somebody else. But has anybody bought property in any of these PDs?
I'm not aware of, you know.
So, I mean, there's, there's no way that we're going to have a lawsuit pop on us because we changed something?
That I don't know. I'm not aware of anyone that's, that's bought property.
Okay. I think we should know that before we, or by the time we make a decision that's going to affect maybe somebody that has purchased whatever, it's like these guys purchased that property in Anchorburg, you know, and then came back to us and wanted to turn the roads back over to us and do some other things. I mean, you know, we made some changes there, because that was what was going to take in order to get the 50 or 75 homes that were going in there. And I mean, we didn't give away the farm, we didn't change the square footage. As a matter of fact, I think we got some ups in some of the square footages, so. But anyway, that's, that's all I had. That was my question, and I apologize for the lengthy comment.
First of all, just to mention the word moratorium, Michael, I thought we'd been in a moratorium for five years, where I said, I thought, I'm ready for it to end. I see a lot of people in this industry out here, but, and I'm serious, I think we're all ready for it to end, but if you zoned a PD, and you got, you got what you got from your zoning, and I went in and bought 25 lots today, and I closed on them today with the conditions that were attached to that 25 lots today, and you put a moratorium and change its requirements, that creates a taking, doesn't it, Lieutenant? It clearly creates a taking.
Right. What I understand, Michael, to say, though, that what he's proposing is that the, the conditions that will be in the ULDC will be on those where there are no conditions in effect, as opposed to ones where there would be, where you would be sort of bound by, you know, what was zoned at the time.
And that's a great point, because, you know, existing conditions, if there's a, if there are conditions already associated with a property, then those conditions will continue to prevail.
Correct.
Then how are you going to affect the PDs that's already on the, on the ground that's recorded?
Well, again, if there are no conditions, it wouldn't affect those that are already built out, but in, in any future development of those PDs, if there are no conditions in place, again, in much the same manner as if it's existing R2, R3, R4 property that has not yet been developed, and someone wants to go and develop, and there's no conditions on that subdivision, they would be bound by the provisions indicated in Section 4.0107. And we're saying the same thing, we're going to look to put some, yeah, and these address things such as building width, minimum building width, minimum roof pitch, materials, building materials, roof materials, things of that nature, some base level standards, so make sure there's some consistency throughout the county.
Let me ask you one last question.
Yes, sir.
Of all the rezonings and stuff that we do as a board, what is the only one that's required to go through an ARC approval?
ARC for a rezoning.
For DRI, talking about DRI.
Yeah, for, yeah, DRI, and it depends on a certain threshold, number of units, size.
What would that be?
Well, it may well be a, like a PD or a mixed-use type of development, but typically.
So would it be forced to go back through that?
Is it two, 200 acres, 200 homes?
Sure, you go to thresholds for residential.
What is the requirement?
It's been a while.
It's been a while since we zoned one.
Yeah.
The requirements for DRI would be 120 acres if it were a mixed-use development, and then 250 units based on 1,800 square feet per unit to trigger the threshold for DRI.
Which is the majority of PDs, correct?
Yes, sir.
They typically don't put building material restrictions on those. They look at accessibility.
Transportation.
Overall impacts to areas.
Right.
Sidewalls, connectivity, those sorts of things.
Not that I recall, because I'm not sure at that time when the rezoning came in if Greta even existed. Yes, sir.
It's been like the late 90s, not long since they got here, so I can't.
I think it did. And I, I think I was going through the file earlier today, and I'll go back and double-check that prior address, come back, but I'm pretty sure it did.
All right, so if I'm hearing everybody correctly, we'll see you back on September 17th with some recommendations.
Yeah, thank you.
Madam Chair, can I add one comment? Michael, there's a, there's a lot of people here tonight that's, I guess they caught wind of this. Do we want to have any public comment concerning this, or do you want to fur it to another date?
I'd prefer to defer when we can have, because, like I said, I've been out of the country for the last week, and I was even surprised to see moratorium as part of it, because, you know, you know, that was not the intent. I think that's what got people stirred up, was you hear the word moratorium, and that was never the intention that I was looking for with this, and that was just my miscommunication with Michael.
Michael, one last thing I'd like to add is, if we, I know you mentioned the September 17th as a morning meeting, I would prefer this one being such a sensitive item and be fit on a PM meeting.
I agree.
The 17th, should, is 17th the morning?
It's already been advertised.
Okay, we need 18.
We need the 18th.
The 18th, that needs to be an evening meeting.
What was it advertised for? That's correct. We, it's already been advertised, we want to make sure we met the 15-day advertising requirement, but it should be the board's desire, we can, on Monday, hear it, move it to the next day.
Yeah, it needs, yeah, it needs to be an evening meeting, so we can do that. We can, we can hear it and then delay any decisions until the 18th.
Okay. Okay, that's the case. We may need to push it back to the, the next night meeting that we have, which may be first middle of October.
You're adding, one day you already meet the requirements, you're meeting the requirements.
Yeah, we had to put the advertising, because again, it has to be a 15-day advertising requirement, so we wouldn't make the, we wouldn't make it to try and advertise it by tomorrow, we wouldn't be able to make the 15-day advertising requirement.
It's going to be a little month.
We'll just push it back to the next.
The third Tuesday night in October.
Yes, ma'am.
We have a meeting on the second, don't we? No, it's a night meeting.
That's a morning meeting.
The next one will be October 16th, which will be a PM meeting. Set it up for them.
All right. We'll see you back in October.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approval of a management agreement regarding Atlanta South Regional Airport. Our President is Fred Alata, County Manager, handout number one.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Chief of Madam Chair and Board Members. Last Tuesday, we had a call meeting for the discussion and, to discuss an extended term agreement with Appports between the county and Appports, mainly because the interim agreement that we had up to that point was expiring on August 31st. It was the board's choice that I go back to Appports and ask them to instead extend the interim agreement for either 180 or 90 days. I took that back to them, and they were not prepared to do that, and as a result, we had issues and had another meeting on Friday to do a seven-day extension of that interim agreement, with the intent of coming back tonight to present the alternative that Appport is presenting, or what wanted us to present. This agreement that I presented last year, last week, I'm not going to go through the whole presentation again, it's basically the same agreement with one additional clause that has been put into the agreement as paragraph 1303. "In the event that during the period of January 1, 2013 through January 31, 2013, the board shall, by resolution in accordance with the board's rules and procedures, reject this extended term agreement. Either party shall have the right for a period of 30 days following such rejection to terminate this extended term agreement by issuing a notice of termination set in forth the decision to terminate this extended agreement in accordance with this section 1303. Such termination shall become effective upon the receipt of the notice of termination by the other party. In the event of the termination of the extended term agreement pursuant to this section 1303, the county shall pay Appports a prograder preliminary or manage, full management fee as applicable, Appports' costs and expenses incurred prior to the date of determination for items that are identified in Exhibit C, and the actual out-of-pocket cost expenses incurred by Appport arising from the early termination of any lease by Appport of property located at the airport and acquired in connection with the performance of the service." Basically, that was to allow the incoming board, which was an issue raised by some board members last week, about obligating the future boards. This was their alternative suggestion in desiring to have a board, the board approve the agreement, as opposed to wanting to accept, Appport wanting to accept an acceptance of the continuation of the interim agreement. I do have a, and I'll introduce in just a minute here, somebody from Appport to come up and speak and, and make some comments and some, answer some questions, but before I do that, what I do want to do is to, also had a request last week, and I've made some phone calls yesterday, even though it was a holiday, I was able to get ahold of One Airport, and I spoke with the city and airport manager in Covington, and asked various questions about their operations and so on. Covington is the airport that, if you recall, that's the one Baxter is going into Newton, and that's, the city of Covington owns that airport. My conversation with them, the question that was raised last week, and I said I would do the homework to try and get answers, I didn't know if I can get it this quickly, but I've got some answers, and that is regarding the profitability, if you would, of other airports. In speaking with the city slash airport manager, he indicated that they had been losing about $100,000 a ye, I'm going to go this way. I asked him if they were making money, he said they were losing money. I asked him, "Are you losing more than $100,000?", and he said, "Yes." At that point, I didn't ask any further as to the figure being precise or exact, I figured at least I knew they were losing over $100,000 a year. What he did indicate, and I have other, lots of notes, and I won't go into all of them unless, unless you have specific questions and I can answer them, because I do have two other airports to speak with, have spoken with, but their board has been purchasing land out there, trying to expand the airport. Their view is the airport is more of an economic support, if you would, for the county, for the city, and that's where they've been, been going in past years as far as buying land and expand, or the expansion took place in 2006 to the 5,501 feet. They did indicate they did have a holdup from 1998 to 2005. The city of Oxford had sued them to slow, to stop it or slow it down. It was ruled that there was no reason for it to be stopped, and at that point, they then proceeded and expanded the airport to the 5,501 feet. That's Covington. Next, I spoke with someone today at Fulton County, in Fulton County, it's Brown Airport, I believe everybody goes by Charlie Brown, had a conversation with airport manager, who reports the facilities and transportation service person who wasn't there, and who then reports to the county manager, the way they structure it. They are making, or projected to make, a profit at this point of about $180,000 a year this, this year in their operations, and he even feels they may do better than that, but that is their projected budget of revenues and expenditures and the net profit, if you would. They have about 1,000 acres, they're out of space, their strength is what I'd consider to be a mature airport. They have, their strength comes with their tenants, they have Cox Communications, two divisions of Coca-Cola, Home Depot, Ted Turner, and he mentioned Raytheon, because they had a bond issue back when, and that's been paid off, and I didn't specifically ask him if Raytheon is still there, but that name did come out in the conversation. Again, the mention was that it's been a major thrust, their major thrust was to, again, use it as what he called a diamond to be developed as economic development, although up until about two and a half, three years ago, I think he said there wasn't much focus on it, and then all of a sudden, he said, "I think two and a half, three years ago", became more of a focus towards using it in that capacity. So they, again, their strength is, having been there a long time, their customer, their tenant base, and at the same time, like I said, they are profitable. The next one is Peachtree City Airport. I did not call, although I had talked to their county, or their airport manager, in prior conversations, I was discussing access rights with him about a month ago, but what I did find is that on the, their airport, on their website, they do have financials and, that are presented for the airport. And I have it right here, they, the number is, financials presented, they show revenues as about $1,008,11 and $1,005, almost $1,006 in 2010. Their operating income before amortization and depreciation is, can't read that, $6,322 in '11, it was $45,245, so above break even, not a lot, a lot of money, but the question was, what are these other airports making? This is the only one I could find where the financials were, again, published or in, where I can get them without having to ask, and so I didn't call them and ask a bunch of questions in preparing for the meetings today, but did, did get ahold of that.
Sure. What's the federal and state contributions of?
That would be their grants, that should be their grants that they've received.
So at the end of the year, there was $1.5 million in 2011 and 2.8 million more than the previous year?
That would be the increase in their assets, again, after depreciation, which is below that, and the additions that they had with state contribution, state or, state or federal contributions, as I understand it. And again, I'm answering the question based on interpretation of what I know of the financials and how, how they work, but I can't say with specificity that that's exactly, but the wording would lend itself to state and G-DOT contributions.
Would any, none of that stuff would play into the, the revenue splits that we're talking about, though, right? None of the, the federal and state, that's all balance sheet transactions, so that wouldn't be part of the calculation, correct?
Balance sheet, yes. And basically, again, it'd be, for us, if we're doing an expansion of the airport, or whatever we've been doing, if we do an expansion, it's $5 million, the contribution from the federal 90 and state 5 would be, I believe that would be the presentation of that financial statement.
Okay.
And then, as I said, I spoke, when I spoke with the President of the company, Ozzy Moore, last week, Friday, actually, after our meeting, indicated that he would like to send one of his people down. He was already committed, last minute, out of town, engagement, and couldn't make it. But he did go ahead and have Chuck Kurtz, who's with me, with us today, come down, flew down today. Chuck's the VP of Engineering and Development for Appports. He's been with them 36 years with the company. He's done, as I asked him, well over hundreds of projects, and I asked him just if he would come up and speak to, question, or give an overview of Appports, and let you and the public understand who Appports is. Some of the things that could, could speak to as questions that have come up, how they've done this deal, their feelings on the deal, basically make the case for why they're even wanting to do a deal with Henry County. And so I'll just let Chuck, and I'll be here and answer questions as well, but I thought I'd let Appports go ahead and present themselves as well. Chuck?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name again is Chuck Kurtz, I'm the Vice President of Engineering for Appports. Ozzy Moore asked that I attend this evening in his stead. Unfortunately, he had a prior engagement outside of the country and could not be here. For the benefit of board members who may not be familiar with Appports and members of the general public, Appports is an aviation management company. Our roots go back 80 years and started with being a division of Pan American World Airways. I started with the company 36 years ago. At that time, we managed one general aviation airport and a heliport in New York City. Since that time, we've expanded the company and now manage 15 airports, mostly in the Northeast United States, as well as provide facility management for some airlines at Newark International Airport. Ozzy had asked me to convey to the board, you know, our, our interest in this project. When we were first contacted by the county about the, the airport, you know, at first glance, the airport, the airport itself wouldn't really fall into our, our realm of airport management. We have a threshold that we would look at in, in terms of our marketing efforts to see what was that an airport that might be a likely candidate for airport management. However, it did offer a unique, unique opportunity. You know, again, in the 36 years, we've grown to 15 airports, and a lot of times, in order to get an airport management contract, first, we have to convince the airport owner that, you know, it's a good idea for them to do, and then generally, we're in, have to help them prepare an RFP where they go through a solicitation in order to compete and hopefully win this. And that's a long gestation period and can take a lot of time. So we've looked at ways of expanding our, our potential markets. The fact of the matter is, airports that are profitable aren't necessarily candidates for airport management contracts. It's only those that usually are losing money that are seeking, you know, our types of, of services. And again, we viewed that with a certain threshold, that below a certain level, we didn't think that we could make it profitable for the client as well as pull our management fee. But this provides a unique opportunity in that it could open up a new line of business where one of the things that we do, unique in, in the industry, is in the utilization of our personnel, where we cross utilize our personnel. And we're viewing this as an opportunity, while it's not solely a airport management And we're viewing this as an opportunity, while it's not solely a airport management contract, but it's also a development contract, which opens up additional sources of revenue that may, in fact, then be able to justify the management fee that we would normally be seeking. And that's really the context here of why we're interested in this opportunity. That coupled with the fact that we found in discussions with representatives of counties, there's a strong interest in developing the airport. That plays in particular. One of the concerns I personally had was the expectations of the county, that, you know, wanting this to be the real economic engine for the county and being able to meet those expectations. And certainly did not want to be putting our position, ourself in a position where we didn't feel that it was doable, that it was, you know, destined to fail. So, you know, we believe that there is an opportunity for growth in the airport and our interest in this development. With respect to the contract extension, we've been working with the county for nine months now on this, and this has been basically at our cost. We do have a project manager that we have provided to the county, which we are reimbursed for, but we have been involved with other activities such as development of minimum standards, working with the redesign of some of the engineering for the runway extension project, that we've incurred costs that we are eating under, you know, as part of a marketing effort, in an effort to obtain this. And we're just concerned that, you know, going for another six-month or nine-month extension, you know, we're incurring more costs there. And all the time, you know, we're out there trying to promote the airport, bringing in more revenue, and it could come to a point where you may decide that you may not need us or want us after all. So that's really why we're taking the position we are at this point in time. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Preston?
First of all, I want to thank you for coming down to see us, because I know probably, I mean, the political process is not, you know, one that's very comforting, and you probably hear a lot of rumors and conjecture. I will tell you, I know, being the District Two representative, I'm excited about the airport, and I do think it can be an economic engine for District Two. And I just, you know, and I'm not against Appports, and I hope that has not been conveyed or anything like that. The problem, the only things I just want to make sure is that we do the best deal for the citizens of Henry County. And kind of the questions I had was, I had a chance to go review your website for Appports. And I just want to find, how many of your 16 current airports have airport authorities? Do they all have airport authorities or not?
No, no. Our clients are cities.
Right.
They are, they are state. They are by state agency. They are airport authorities. There are three, four that have airport authorities.
Okay. Out of the 16, so the...
Actually, I should say five, five, yeah. Well, let me, let me back that up there. We deal with five, five airport authorities. Now, in terms of the number of airports, one is the Rhode Island Airport Commission, where we're managing five of their GA airports. And then for Lehigh Valley Airport Authority in Pennsylvania, we're managing three of their airports. So there are multiple airports that are...
Oh, so they're under, so a lot of those airports are under the same type of authority or commission?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So the average length of your management contract, you know, y'all put that on your website. I noticed most of them were two or three years. There was a few that were five years, and there was one, I think your most recent was a 10-year contract. Can you explain why ours was longer than what was typical?
Well, in those particular contracts, they were straight management contracts, where we were there providing the O and M, and depending on the customer, we might be providing engineering services, legal service for negotiation of leases. In this particular instance, this is a development opportunity too. And obviously, there will be investment being made, and in order to recoup or return on that investment, obviously, we need time.
Right. And I know when Mr. Alletta, at the last meeting, we talked about, because one of the things that I know is very popular with the citizens is if we did have losses, there's a chance that y'all would come into play on the shortfall. But a lot of that comes into play under the full management period and not during the runway expansion period.
That is correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
And I think, you know, Commissioner Holder made some comments at the last meeting, and I just wanted to, because I want to kind of, I understand y'all's need for assurances. I mean, I can, your company is trying to figure things out, and nobody wants you working for free. I mean, and that seemed like that was what Mr. Alletta kind of laid out to me that y'all were concerned about. The only thing we were trying to do is that there are unique political things going on, is that there's going to be a changing board coming in. And we were just trying to, kind of one of the suggestions that I had made to Fred was that I was, I had no problem with you guys collecting some type of management fee for the coming months while we waited for the new board to come in during that extension period that we had talked about. And that would also give y'all an opportunity, because I think Appports has had the unfortunate situation that when there's been trash around the current airport, or the grass hasn't been cut, and other things like that, because of, your name has come out up in the past, you've kind of, you know, been the cusswork essentially with that. And that's not necessarily your fault that some of those things were going on while y'all were just in this overseeing kind of mentoring stage. I was kind of hoping if we had an extension where y'all were taking a management fee while we were waiting for the new board, it would allow y'all to have the opportunity in the very short term to kind of show what you can do in a four-to-five, even six-month period with cleaning up some of the things around the airport and other functional things, just to give the new board coming on just some assurances of, this is the Appports way. And that's what I think, I hope it wasn't construed as anything other than that, you know, but that was kind of where, and the items I've shared with Fred as well on those thoughts. I am kind of, you know, and I'll close it down here because it's getting very late. I don't know if I can support, because this, what concerns me is this is not a temporary contract. This is actually the full contract that would go into effect with a kickout clause for 30 days in the month of January. And I worry for you guys that that's not completely fair, because the very first month that we have a brand-new board, I just know, the first month I was on the county commission, there's a lot of newness. I mean, you're very new to every concept that's coming down the pipe. You also have the pomp and circumstance of the new board getting sworn in. I just want you guys to truly have a fair shot. I'd recommend it to Fred that that provision needs to be changed to 60 days or change it to the month of February. That way, it truly gives you guys a fair deal. But I would like that to be under more of a temporary, you know, term with, you know, a management fee for you guys, so you're not working for free. But under current stance with no airport authority and then a full contract that springs, it gives me a little bit of concern.
One of the things that we spoke of when you asked, and when this language, I gave you this language, was you were concerned, and you sort of addressed it, but you addressed it in a different way as well, and I don't want to overshadow that.
Sure.
Was that the January 31 date, which I just read is in 1303, you felt was too short to give the next board time, and that you would really like to see that extended to 60 days, which would be March 1st or February 28th or 29th, whatever it is next year. And that was one of the things that, on my list of things we discussed that I didn't get to you on, but that was one that Brian had expressed a concern of giving Appports an extra 30 days, let the board have an extra 30 days than the January 31. So...
I, unfortunately, I would have to take that back off to Ozzy and our board, but to be honest with you, I would see why they would have no objection to that.
Mr. Bowman?
Well, Fred, is that, let me ask this one question, because I got a number of calls after we've had several meetings. To be honest with everyone sitting in here, most of the calls I've got have been for the airport, and I know there's, most of the people sitting here probably not for the airport, and that's okay. They have a right to be whichever way they want to be, but that's okay. But there was a 90-day kickout clause in the contract anyway. Isn't that correct? I just want to be sure.
I went back and looked, and I was trying to find where the 90-day was specified. And I scrambled, if you would, since then. And I knew this last week much better than I do today, because I focused today on strictly the whatever.
I know there was a kickout clause, I don't know that.
And I was trying to find that, but the paragraph, Article 13 has default and termination and reasons for terminations and so on. And Chuck, if you can address, if you know exactly where that is or whatever.
There's termination for cause provisions in the agreement. I don't recall...
I thought there was a termination clause for each party.
There's a termination for cause in 1302 for the county. Goes on in a bunch of As and Bs, As enlisted in numbers and Bs. It gets into the termination and the default and so on and so forth with the 60-days, 60-day clause in there as to the things that would be considered for cause, allowing a terminate within, on the 60th calendar day after receipt of notice. That's in there, and that was 60. And I've gone through this thing again this afternoon, late this afternoon, trying to get specific of exactly where and how, and I can't recall it.
All right. Well, since you can't find that one, let's go back to the one that you just put up on the board about the 30 days, which I have no problem with Mr. Preston's move to move that to 60 days to give more time. I don't think that's a major malfunction. But now, that is a kickout clause in, in the event that the future board members decide, we don't want this contract, and they can terminate, they just have to do the rules and procedures as we normally would, correct?
That's what that clause was intended to do, is to say to the new board, again, January 31st, or if again, it needs to be March 1st or February 28th, to the extent it goes back and Appports agrees to, another 30 days. That's what that clause was meant to say, and that's what they were asking for, is to give the permission to the board that they're not obligated as a new board with this, and they can go ahead and terminate at that time. And that's what that, call it a kickout, as you said, it kicks the contract out, it's no longer in place.
Now, could you tell me, because I do not know, at the end of that, say, March 1 date, what that cost would be to the county? You know, I know you probably can't nail it down.
There was a $50,000 management fee that does not get paid during the terms of the agreement on an annual basis. In the runway expansion period, the first part of it, it was $50,000 per year, but it was not payable unless there was a profit. So if there's no profit, there was no contribution by the county to put any money into the airport to pay that management fee. It defers year after year after year. If even after all the extended runway period, there's still not been a payment, then that money would defer into the full management agreement whereby they, Appports, would have to absorb it within their P and Ls, for which at that time, they're responsible for 100% of the losses. So to the extent it defers to that full management period and they choose to pay themselves the deferred expenditures, it would come out of their P and L, again, with no contribution from the county for that period of time.
I think, though, getting to your point in terms of what the cost would be, if the board opted not to enter into that agreement, then the fee would be prorated based on the number of months from the date of execution.
So if you had five months in there, then it'd be five months...
It'd be like five twelfths of the $50,000.
It's $4,166 a month, and I got off on the other part of it.
That's what I was...
It's one twelfth of the 50 grand.
What dollar amount are we talking about?
Plus any out-of-pocket expenses that would have been incurred.
And you said plus?
Any out-of-pocket expenses.
Which are, I just need a number. You wouldn't know that because you don't, because, okay.
Typically, what we've been doing as far as keeping them up there, so we don't have travel costs and all that type of stuff, and working with the airport manager here, having conference calls and avoiding, again, travel costs and things like that. So that's what we've been doing. And to the extent that it's five months, I think the figure's around 21,000. I think I, if you still have that figure, Brian, it's about 21 grand. If it's six months, if we go to March 1st or February 28th, that would be six months from, if you would, today. And of course, half of 50 grand, six months would be 25,000. So that's the figure that, at the time it'd be terminated, would be due as a prorater cost.
Do we currently owe, do we currently owe Appports any outstanding money?
We've been invoiced, and I think, did we cut the check recently for the last payment? Do we owe Appports any money at this time? The money we owe would be accrued into the June 30th P and Ls, and that's just for the cost of the airport manager that we're billing, being billed back for.
Mr. Preston?
Only concern, I mean, is this the, is this the, because I know we had presented either the 90 or the 90 days or six months, you know, and y'all kind of turned that down, and now we've come back and we've got this option. I still, I mean, because there's nothing in here that addresses, because by what you explained, even though it's five airport authorities, those five airport authorities oversee, it sounded like the majority of your airports that you guys have management agreements with, is I still don't see where that's addressed. And I just, I don't want to cause you guys hardship either at Appports. And I really am trying to figure out how we shepherd this through so that this works best for everybody, including, you know, and that's where an airport authority makes me rest a lot easier, because as I talk to people in the aviation field, there's usually a degree of separation between county commissioners and the local government, and then the governing board that's helping with the decisions, because, you know, pilots are, you know, people in the aviation field, especially for an airport like our airport, are very passionate. And I just want to make sure that we set this recipe up for success, and I don't want to not structure this in a way that it's going to be successful in 2013.
I mean, we have, we have actually transitioned where we started out with our contract with a city who ultimately then created either the state, in both cases, actually, the state created airport authorities, where then the contracts were assigned, or management contracts were assigned from the city to the authority. Obviously, with the authority, the things that you need to be concerned about are what, you know, what authority, the authority is going to have in terms of funding, because that's always a big source. We have one particular authority, which is created by the state, but has no way of basically funding itself, and it relies on a state as well as a city subsidy, you know, in order to make the budget meet on an annual basis. So just, if you're going to be going that route, you just need to be careful on how the authority is structured to make sure that it has all of the authority that it needs in order to function appropriately.
Because, I guess, Chuck, just to go, look at Article 13, which was the termination article. And we went over, there were items in there for cause. But what concerns me is that there's not any provision in there for, without cause. Even though we're given this kickout provision in 2013, I mean, just playing this through in my head, if we're adopting a contract that is essentially a take it or leave it in the month of January and February of 2013, and there's no malleability or flexibility for the upcoming board on anything, I just don't see how that's a recipe for success. And I'm just trying not to waste everybody's resources. That's why I'm asking if there's another option. And it sounds like you're not going to be able to give me this tonight, or get an extension.
Let me, what our concern is, again, under the long-term relationship, you're going to be looking to make investments. And that investment is going to take time to get reimbursed. Even when we go into the full management period, all right, if there's a operating shortfall, Appports would be making up that operating shortfall. Okay? I mean, you know, looking at this runway extension, that's critical in terms of increasing the activity at the airport. That's not to say that, you know, once you complete that, you're going to be immediately, you know, profitable to the extent that you're going to be able to reimburse for any accrued management fees that are other operating expenses, as well as paying back your bond indebtedness. All right? So, you know, included in the, in the operating cost are reimbursement of the bond indebtedness. I think it's over a 15-year period was the payback on that. So all that has to come out before the management fee is there. So, you know, it could be the first several years could be operating loss. In fact, the airports that we've come into, where we have come in and they've been operating at losses, you know, it would take us a couple of years to turn them around to make them profitable. So, you know, if, you know, it's going to take us three or four years to get to the point where we're able to reimburse ourselves for those deferred... the point where we're able to reimburse ourselves for those deferred management fees, then, you know, we need some kind of length of term there. And I couldn't, you know, you would have to talk to Ozzy relative to a change in, in that provision. But obviously, if, if we were to agree to that provision, there would have to be some provision for reimbursement for the unamortized investment that would have been made.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. This is typically not a public comment item. We typically do not take public comments for contract agreements, but because we had two individuals that did sign up to speak specifically on this item, I'm going to go ahead and take the public comment at this time rather than waiting until the end of the meeting. And so at this time, we have a comment from Mr. Don Henderson of 1,005 Test Court who wishes to speak on the airport and you have five minutes.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, just a couple of comments on Mr. Alletta's statistics from airports that he cited. They've been in existence for at least 25 years, I know of. And to be making $180,000 off of that kind of an investment doesn't seem like a real good return on my, in my opinion. Also, in regards to the airport management agreement, I would request respectfully that the current board not obligate the incoming chairman or new members to any contracts that will exceed the outgoing board member's term in office. Also, we've discussed last Friday, I guess it was, the excise tax. If Henry County wants to be competitive, I think we should be the lowest taxed of any jurisdiction, not just contiguous but statewide. Thank you.
Thank you. The other citizen that has signed up to speak on the airport is Laura Kimball of McDonough. Laura, are you here? Good evening, you have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, my name is Laura Kimball. And we do live in District Two where the airport is. And my husband and I own a small business in the aviation community. My husband's also a licensed commercial pilot. And we're familiar with the Atlanta South Regional Airport, which we call Terra Field, and other airports around the area. I know that some of you believe that you are trying to do the right thing for Henry County and for this airport, trying to expand, bring in jobs and stuff like that. But I wondered if you stop to think that maybe there's a chance that you could be wrong about that. And I wondered if you were willing to really listen to other points of view, to people who are really involved in the airport there. There's been a lot of talk tonight about government interference in, in our, in our lives, our local lives, and we see the extent of it here with federal funds coming in, help with this airport, and there's always strings attached with federal funds, always. And I want to say that we do not need a 6,000-foot runway here at Terra Field. Although Terra Field is 4,503 feet long, it is, it is plenty long enough for a Falcon 50 aircraft to land there. And Rouse Racing is the only company that we are aware of that needs a longer runway to land their aircraft there and that's only once a year. So they currently use Falcon Field, which their, their runway is about 5,500, including thresholds. We can take a lesson from Briscoe Field in Gwinnett County. Their small airport is 6,000 feet. And that airport has become a white elephant for them and they are currently trying to sell it. Some of these airports that Mr. Alletta has talked about tonight that we're familiar with, some of them, or most of them, they have something in common that we do not have here and that is interstate access. These corporations, they go mainly to PDK and the reason is because they can get right on the interstate and get easy access really quickly to downtown. And it's not that case here. Here, they'd have to land and they'd have to make the trek up 1941 to get to the downtown and get to the interstate. It's just not convenient. And I've listened carefully to Mr. Alletta's presentation he made the other day and I viewed the contract myself and I appreciate all the efforts they've put into it. And Mr. Kurtz, I appreciate that you have taken time to come down here to meet with us today and I'm sorry you've gotten kind of in the middle of a polit, this is a political hotbed here, all this surrounding this airport here. They talked about, in the contract, that they would expect a profit. We don't, I just don't see it that way. I just don't see a profit. I think the, if there's any profits, it's going to come from the pockets of us citizens, which is money that we don't have. And I just don't see that there's going to be a surplus. And I think that the local pilots, we know many of the pilots there at Terra Field, and if you ask them about it, most of them agree that if anything, we do need airport authority. And I do stress if anything. We've been involved here in Henry County for a long time and I haven't, haven't come to meetings and got really involved like I should to really understand what was going on here in our county, but that's no longer the case. And for many of us too, we're going to be more involved now in, in what's going on in our county. And I urge you tonight to wait to make any important decisions that affect our county financially until the newly elected board comes in, because they have been chosen by the people. And it'll be a large turnover and I think it would be the right thing to wait until then to make any kind of decisions that's going to bind us financially. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Alletta, if you'd like to come back up and Mr. Kurtz. Are there any additional questions from the board pertaining to this item? Okay. If not, I'll look to the board for a motion.
Well, I didn't have a lot of luck on the last motion, so, and I don't know that I'm going to have any on this motion. But I believe that we've spent, we started talking with AVPORTS and NET Jets and a number of people in February of 2011. This is not a rush to judgment by any means or a rush to do anything by any means, but I feel like this board was also elected. And that, by saying so, I'm going to make a motion with an amendment. The amendment would be to add till the March 1st deadline for the new board coming in. I'm going to make a motion, we accept the contract as it is with the, with the new information that allows the new board 60 days to look at everything. And if they want to terminate, then they have the procedure by which to do it. But I want to amend it to where it's March 1 instead of February 28. That's, you know, March 1 would be that date. And if, if AVPORTS denies doing that, then my motion would fail. So, but anyway, that's my motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Staney. All in favor of the motion? All opposed. Motion carries 3-2 with Bowman, Staney and Mathis in favor and Preston and Holder in opposition. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding the term of the appointees to the Georgia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Disabilities Regional Planning Board, and that's Exhibit Number 12. What you have before you is vacant, we had an issue where the vacancies that were filled had all, all their terms expired on the same date. So a request was made that each term be, that the terms be staggered so that they don't all end on the same date. And so the recommendation for the three existing members that were recently appointed is that the term would end for Jim Risher on 2/14/13, for Ms. Coons, 2/14/14, and for Ms. Craig, 2/14/15. And that way, they're not losing all of their board members at the same time. So that, that request came to us from that board and with that being said, if there are no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve that request. Have a motion by Mr. Holder?
Second with a comment.
Second for Mr. Staney with a comment.
Have we talked to these and you said they're, they're comfortable with the 13?
Well, they're all on the board currently, so it would just stagger their expiration dates, basically. And they are, they're eligible to be reappointed for two terms, two consecutive terms. And second by Mr. Staney, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0. Okay, we've already had public comment. Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
Ms. County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, Monday, September 17th at 9:00 a.m. and Tuesday, September 18th at 6:30 p.m., we have regular board meetings. Monday, October 1st at 9:00 a.m., we have a workshop meeting. Tuesday, October 2nd at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular meeting. Monday, October 15th at 9:00 a.m. and Tuesday, October 16th at 6:30 p.m., we have regular meetings. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Is a motion?
Whoops. Oh, I'm sorry, I always skip that. All right, we have the approval of the June 5th regular meeting minutes, which is Exhibit Number 13 in your books. Are there any additions that need to be made to those minutes?
Certainly.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Bowman and second by Mr. Staney, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0 and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Staney, all in favor. Motion carries 4-0, we stand adjourned.